Annual study session of the Board of Trustees, the Community College District. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Bailey?
President Norris.
Here.
Vice President Hollerber.
Here.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Trustee Patrities.
Here.
Trustee Pimentel.
Here.
Mr. President, also in attendance are Chancellor Claire, College of San Mateo interim president Lopez, Skyline College president Marino, Kenyatta College president Moore.
Great. Well, thank you very much and welcome to everyone. Can we please display the flag so we can do the pledge of allegiance? Great. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the discussion of the order of the agenda. And staff has recommended that we change the order of the items that we are going to be taking up. You can see there's six of them down below. And having talked with the trustees, the chancellor, as in communication with the trustees have thought that the grouping might be a little bit better. So the recommended order that we'd like to follow is number one, be number two. Number two be number one, discussion of interest in defining achieving environmental justice. Having second, number five, discussion of best practices in human resources. Having number one, third, discussion of board governance practices. And then have four, number three, fourth in order, discussion of use of data. Having number four, be fifth, discussion of transformative curriculum. And then number six, continue to be number six, discussion of investing in resources because those last three kind of like dovetail into each other. It might make for a better discussion if that is acceptable to the board. Does anyone have any objections to that? Okay, then that will be our order for today. Let me, let me also let you know that we are hoping, because this is a retreat and a long, a long meeting, that we have a certain amount of time allocated to each of the matters. And that we'll be taking some breaks along the way at about 10:45, we'll take a short break. At 12 o'clock, we'll, we'll talk about taking a break for lunch. And then perhaps another break in the afternoon around 1:30. But we'll just kind of see how it goes as far as that goes and we can play it by ear. So basically, the next item that I have is statement from the public on non-agendaist items. Again, I would ask everyone who wishes to address the board on that to remember that we have a long agenda today and that I have a three-minute limit that is the board policy for speakers. So, Mr. Bailey, do we have anyone?
I see no hands raised at this time, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much. So then we will move on then to the retreat informal and discussion, information and discussion items. And that's basically the way that we're going to be kind of looking at it. The first, the first two items are going to be items where perhaps we're going to have more of the staff involved as well and everyone that needs to contribute along the way can do so. So the first item is going to be discussion of interest in defining and achieving environmental justice. Chancellor Clay, you want to just kick it off for us and then we'll go from there?
Sure. And thank you, President Norris, and welcome to everybody. And it's nice to see so many participants as, or I'm sorry, it's nice to see so many guests as well listening in. This overall is really a day for the, for us to hear from you as a board and to have board conversation. However, the first two topics really kind of lent themselves to a bit of a staff presentation. So at this point, I'd like to introduce to you Joe Fullerton, Joe Fullerton, who I always forget your, your official title, but he's, he's everything sustainability for, for our district. And Jose, I don't know whether you wanted to say a few words first or if you wanted to just turn it right over to Joe.
No, just I don't have, we do not have a formal presentation. I have Joe Fullerton here, who is our energy and sustainability manager, as well as Michelle Rodowski, our director of maintenance and operations. You know, basically here to respond to any specific questions that President Norris or any members of the Board of Trustees may have regarding environmental justice. We're really here to basically answer questions. Joe, unless you wanted to add something?
Um, no, I'm glad to answer questions. I mean, there's, this is something that I'd be glad to talk about at length. So I want to make sure that anything that, that I, that I would cover is appropriate and in response to what the Board of Trustees is interested in knowing more about. You know, we can talk about current activities, some of the things that other colleges are doing and/or the global context of environmental and climate justice efforts. So, you know, I, any, any number of items that within this, including how it connects to the rest of the agenda.
Yes, Trustee Patrities.
I would love to hear, Joe, from you to hear a little bit about those items from your perspective. I mean, since we're here as a study session and not in a capacity to give us official information. And we also had a great presentation before from you and, and Jose, your team around the current efforts. But I would love to hear from you about sort of some of the broader vision, how it taps into the global situation we're in. And absolutely, I was very excited and impressed to hear, as you talked about it the other day, you know, you, you brought it right down to students and student learning and the student experience. So I would love if to hear, you know, a bit from you for just your perspective and vision before we start with questions, if that's okay, President Norris.
Absolutely. Take a few minutes and kind of give us a little overview as far as that goes, Joe.
Yeah, well, first off, thank you. And I really appreciate the interest of this board in this topic. You know, as we're ongoing and struggling through this, this current crisis, there's these other kind of other waves of crises that are, that are above and perhaps beyond that. And the climate crisis is certainly front and center. There's also, you know, biodiversity, mass extinct, mass extinction crisis ongoing. So, you know, from a, from a contextual perspective, our students, the folks, you know, my son's in the room watching, watching Mr. Rogers right now. And he is going to grow up in a world that's fundamentally different from the one that I grew up in and have been privileged enough to, to grow up in. The carbon-based economy that we've all grown up with has, has created tremendous benefits for us as a human society. And primarily, those benefits have been attributed to the global north and primarily to, to white folks. So, you know, there, from an environmental justice perspective, we can't really pull apart the components of taking climate action and addressing at both the operational, academic and community engagement level, the need to, to address the climate crisis and to have some type of, from my perspective, some type of specific actions around those and specific targets around those. So, you know, from a visionary perspective, I think when I look at, when I look at the leaders in, in this field, there's, there's folks that are involved, certainly in higher education. We can, we don't have to look very far, right, you know, right here in, in the Bay Area. Stanford, UCs, CSUs are all forging ahead with pretty advanced environmental, social and governance type of efforts that address these underlying issues of, of social justice and environmental justice and take climate action from a, from an operational perspective. So from a visionary perspective, there's, there's lots of, lots of opportunity to simply look at what they're doing and provide some steps to try to get to what they're doing. I'm working at the chancellor's office level to kind of create the climate, excuse me, the climate and sustainability revised policy as well as the goals and template to address that. And fundamental within that, the first two things, and we've already prioritized this in our organization. And I think leads to that question about what our vision is, is really focusing on our students' first initiative, really focusing on addressing as much as possible curriculum integration, as much as possible this, this community engagement. So when, when we have courses that are, that are addressing environmental justice, when we have courses that are talking about the ethics of sustainability or the, the, the business attributes of innovating with a sustainability lens or an arts program that is trying to create some type of communication, whether that be visual or in writing or oral for, you know, articulating these, these messy, complex issues, we're doing the right thing. But none of that is quite formalized yet at the, at the district-wide level. There's some, there's some really great activities happening at the campus level. So from a visionary perspective, I think what makes sense, in, in my opinion, is to have something that's centered at the district level that helps the colleges feed up into, into a broader mission and then helps achieve what is an immense opportunity and really an immense responsibility for all of California community colleges to take action and to address these fundamental issues.
Joe, could you also just say a little bit something about how, how we, where are we in the state in terms of community colleges? Because I think that's an important piece of how we work across the system as well.
From a sustainability leadership perspective, we are top-notch from what other folks are doing in terms of our operational practices. We are definitely picking up the pace on, on the academic side. And, and we have some pretty good, you know, broader community engagement side. I wouldn't say that, that our community engagement efforts are, are very local. You know, I, I get to work on a lot of issues both nationally and in the state. But, you know, when I'm talking to the folks here in San Mateo County, either at the county office of sustainability, the county office of education or other, you know, local nonprofits or governmental organizations are like, oh, that's cool. You guys do that? Wow, you have that program? That's really neat. You know, we have like an internship program, we have a fellowship program that are run out of, through, through our department. And, you know, those are really designed to serve our community. So when folks learn about those, they're kind of like, oh, wow, we didn't know about that. So there's, there's definitely a kind of a, you know, the higher education institutions, both in the state and nationally recognize some of the things that we're doing. But locally, there's, there's still some relationship building and still some momentum and alignment that we're, that we're working on. We still, we have a lot to do though. So, you know, when I say we're a leader in community colleges, remember that, you know, and I, and I understand the differences between the UCs and the CSUs and community colleges in terms of how they're operated and how they function and how they're funded. But, you know, we are 10 years behind the CSUs, who are probably 10 years behind the UCs as a system. So we have, we have a lot of room for improvement. And we have some really good models that we can adopt that those systems have already, have already started to use. Of course, we would have to scale them. We'd have to think about what their impacts and influences on us are. But there's some very specific things that we're already talking about that lend to both environmental justice and climate action, some of the things that we've already done. And beyond just the facilities operations and thinking about, you know, like staff housing. It drops our carbon emissions pretty immensely for anybody that doesn't have to drive to campus. It also has lots of affordability advantages for folks that are trying to live in the Bay Area and make a permanent home here. And it creates a community, right? And it creates some points of connection outside of the, the classroom. It builds, it builds coherence in our organization. So those are the types of things that we already have in place and some of the things that we're, that we're doing that don't necessarily fall within the picture of our operational sustainability efforts just yet.
Yeah, Joe is being a little modest here in terms of our posture throughout the state. And then also, let's not forget that the colleges have, you know, prior to the pandemic, we had our Spark Point operations at the three campuses that help with food distribution for those in need. And I want to say that Skyline and Kenyatta also have a transportation initiative, assisting people get to the campuses. So Joe's talking about what we're doing here on the facility side of the house. But in terms of environmental justice, you know, we're, we're really pushing it forward with the initiatives that are being done at the three colleges.
That's a really good point.
And if I might just chime in, because Joe mentioned the employee housing component. We did a survey a couple of years ago, I think it was two years ago, of our residents and employee housing at that point in time to see how much, how many miles saved per year that they were saving. And we calculated about 960,000 miles of saved miles on the highway every year from just those, you know, 104 employee families living in staff housing.
So I guess that's a pretty good summary and we're subject to your questions, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Trustee Pimentel.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just how many miles we got again per employee? It was a total of 960,000 at that point in time for all employees living there. Thanks.
Yes, Trustee Goodman.
Yeah, thank you, Joe, for that, that summary. I had a question. I guess with COVID, there seemed to have been a lot of technologies and different plans that were accelerated. Are there any, did, did we benefit from any of that? Whether it's any type of environmental technologies and, and our processes that are, are being accelerated right now because of the environment that we're in, whether it's the carbon decarbonation goal that we have, the energy storage or any of the issues around being able to be more responsible and energy efficient when we start onboarding, whether it's vehicles or old different devices on the campuses. I know those were some of the goals. Has, has any of that been accelerated because of COVID in this environment right now?
Um, you know, the, the, there's a, two sides to this coin, right? One is from an operational perspective, we have been able to overall kind of decrease our level of energy required to run our campuses just because of the lack of occupancy. But we haven't been able, we can't just like close down campuses for lots of different reasons from, from an energy perspective. There's machinery and equipment that have to stay up running. And Michelle and Jose can certainly talk more about that. From a technological perspective, a lot of the things that we've been working on over really the last decade, decade in terms of digitizing our, our systems, you know, from our building management systems to, you know, more advanced predictive analytics that we use to provide more proactive maintenance around our, our operations, the mapping of our, you know, underground resources, the, the, you know, wireless lighting controls, et cetera. Those all give us a lot of capabilities to be flexible and agile. And one thing that COVID has taught us is that flexibility and agility is, is, is critical. And so when we move forward out of COVID, we'll be able to more quickly adjust to whatever occupancy levels and whatever kind of modified operations that we have more effectively. That said, COVID and other infectious diseases like this, especially airborne diseases, are going to require us to bring a lot more air into our buildings. And that takes a lot of energy, especially when you have to have extra filtration systems. So that's like from the building's perspective and from the hard shell of our, of our infrastructure perspective. But if you think about it right now, we have, we essentially have three large plants. So we have a chiller plant and a heating plant at each one of our campuses. Those serve all, most of our buildings that have those types of heating and cooling demand. In the future, both in a, in a COVID-like future and in the climate restrained future, we may have to be a little bit more flexible and dynamic. So it might be that from a planning perspective, we need to think about more distributed kind of networks. So that's something from an acceleration standpoint, we're, we're starting to research and we're starting to try to understand. We have accelerated, to answer your question, Trustee Goodman, a lot of our understanding of how solar energy storage and EV charging stations will need to expand on our campuses, what it'll actually take for us to do those, the cost of those types of systems, the, the technical, the technological, as well as the logistical issues that come along with those. So we have a pretty good understanding of what those are, both from a challenges and an opportunities perspective. And we've accelerated a lot of our, a lot of our understanding of them and some of our implementation of them. But there will be more to do on that.
What about on, on some of the actionable items that we can begin to act upon? You know, with the campuses being partially closed right now, probably doing assessments of different, you know, devices that are on our campuses that can be transitioned, that you have already planned to transition to more responsible and energy-efficient devices?
Yeah, and we, we have an ongoing effort to do this, right? It is a bit like, it is a bit like painting that Golden Gate Bridge, you know, with so many buildings and so many systems. I mean, we have, you know, near 100 buildings. We have, you know, I have over, we, on one campus, we monitor over 10,000 points of information to understand what our, just what our electricity demand is and how we can control that better, right? So, you know, there's, there's a tremendous amount of data sorting that we do to better understand this. To answer your question, I, I think the, the systems that we have in place, both from a technological perspective and from a technical perspective, are, are really advanced in this way. And we've done a really good job. And I'm not just, you know, like patting myself on the back here. When I, when I look at others, not only in community colleges and I look at others in higher education, even some of our more technologically advanced neighbors like Google and Facebook and Oracle, I talk to their operations folks and I know that we are on par with them in terms of how we use technology and how we use our operational techniques and our people power to get the most out of our systems and to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for our students, both online and in person. So there's room for improvement, there always will be. But overall, I feel like we're kind of, we're probably, you know, like if I were to give us a grade, I would, I would say we're hovering in the A to A minus range, you know? I feel, I feel really, you know, like there's a little bit of room for improvement, but we're doing pretty, pretty good there.
Yeah. And if I can just add, I'm sorry, Trustee Goodman?
No, I was just going to say, I'm sure that's attributed to your leadership and, and the team's leadership. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure that this stayed on our agenda as we have these meetings annually to make sure that we're getting closer to our goals, checking in and making sure you have the support of this board throughout that process.
Yeah, really appreciate the support from, from the board. But let me just, yeah, let me just, in terms of where we are right now, we're in the process of kicking off an energy strategic plan. Joe is putting together an RFQ, RFP, so that we can better understand our energy consumption and plan for the future. That's one aspect. We also have a new RFQ, RFP that's going out to study our building systems. Energy is one component, but our building systems in terms of how they operate. And so we're doing that so that when those two analyses and data information gathering are done, they can basically inform our facilities master plan in support of the educational master plan. But that's a process. We're, we're about a year behind because of COVID. Back in March of 20, we were supposed to start our, our planning processes, but it was all put on hold because of COVID. But with that said, now, you know, we're, we're moving forward. Questions, please?
Yes, yes, Trustee Patrities.
Is, I'm going back to the curriculum piece. Is there a, a means by which those faculty who are creating curriculum related to sustainability and environmental justice, that they can either share it more broadly or can others throughout the campuses even know that, that this is available and that others are doing this? Maybe there's guides or templates for thinking how to integrate these issues into other courses, whether they're arts or sciences or anything in between?
Yeah, we've, we've created a set of tools on our sustainability website for that. And we, we, we generally partner with faculty to, to kind of promote and provide opportunities, both at the course, lesson perspective, and then if they're more interested at kind of the full curriculum integration. And those are, you know, certainly two different levels. And, you know, as, as a facilities professional, you know, it's not my job to create curriculum, but we, we do have lots of resources and we, and we do try to share those both, both actively and we're receptive to creating designed classes and courses with folks. I, I'd have to leave it to the president to answer, you know, kind of more about their process.
I was just going to say, maybe Aaron or one of the college presidents can talk about the integration of sustainability and environmental justice into curriculums and such. It really falls to the academic side.
Yes, I'm sure we'd like to hear that because that's one of the questions that I was going to raise as well. We've talked about the facility side. We have the whole educational side as well. And obviously, COVID has, has forced us to do things differently. And we will learn and benefit from this when we come out of it by, by using these tools in a better way. But how can we also encourage, and I don't know what the tools are and how they can do it? Maybe you can expand on that, Presidents and Vice Chancellor McPhee.
So I'll try to dig into the memory banks a little bit and, and share some information. So we've had climate fellows on a regular basis on each of the campuses. Dr. Grandy, who's currently the dean of STEM at Skyline, was a faculty member. And so would work with colleagues in order to, to embed sustainability curriculum in, in the, in the actual curriculum process on the campus. There's has been work also, for those who are familiar with the concept of pathways in general education, thematic pathways through general education. And sustainability is one of those pathways that, that folks are working on that creates that thread if students want to follow, no matter what degree they're pursuing, from psychology to business. But if they want to have a focus on a theme of sustainability, along with other types of themes, international engagement, social justice, those kinds of things. So I know that that work has taken place in, in certain areas and continues as we develop that guided pathways concept. So the students can identify not just what my ultimate major is, my program of study, but also do I have a secondary interest, kind of like that concept of a major and a minor, right? And sustainability has been one of those that I know that they've worked to develop using our, our relationship with the climate fellows and that program that's been ongoing for a number of years now.
How about, though, in the way that the staff and the faculty are dealing with each other as far as how, how, how subjects are taught, how they interact with each other, not only between themselves at their colleges, but between the three colleges in a way which can basically share information or, and still practices that would be moving in the area of dealing with better environmental use of our resources? I mean, is, is that something that we're looking at or should be looking at? Are there other institutions that are, that are basically having these kinds of programs between even departments, making it interdisciplinary? Those are the kind of things. I see Trustee Patrities. So you're nodding. Why don't you pick it up from there?
Those are, those are some of my questions as well. I'll just add a couple to them and then the folks have answers. I'm wondering if there's, is there any requirement or could there be a requirement that every student who, you know, receives a degree has to have had some class that has some, some type of sustainability or environmental justice embedded in it, again, whether it's an arts class or, you know, a biology class? And I'm also just wondering very specifically, is there, have there been any sort of kind of collaborations between the environmental justice and the anti-racism work that the campuses are doing to be creating, you know, a course or workshops or seminars around that as well?
So, you know, I'm fortunate enough to, to both be a graduate of and teach in Arizona State University system in their master's program. Um, in their master's program and, um, and in their school, you know, and they're certainly one of the global leaders in sustainability education. They have three hundred and fifty plus, uh, practitioners and, and, uh, theorists. That are looking at sustainability from all angles and have a whole school of sustainability. Um, more and more, we're seeing this as, uh, as a, um, something that our higher education institutions are doing. So Stanford's developing a sustainability program as we speak. Of course UC Berkeley has a long storied history of this. Um, this, the CSU's more and more are doing these types of things. So our students are going to articulate into these types of programs. Um, what we're doing, so, you know, from a, from a centralized perspective, we have a district-wide sustainability committee. Each campus has a sta- sustainability committee. On these committees, it is, it is, um, cross-functional and interdisciplinary. So we have operational folks, administrative folks, um, and of course academic folks in, involved in that. Um, we took some time away from that, um, during twenty twenty, uh, because of COVID. Cause we wanted to give our, especially our faculty enough time and space to ensure that they could move whatever course lessons and curriculum. Over to their online learning apparatus and pay attention to that. But we're re-engaging that in the weeks to come. Um, and some of the things that, um, we've talked about in the past, we're, we're starting to launch. So, uh, I'll be creating, uh, a canvas, uh, template, um, with a number of different resources, course lessons, et cetera. Both from, from input from my colleagues at ASU as well as, uh, from folks in the UC system and CSU system. So there's cross-connection to, to those programs. And then if the campuses and or, uh, faculty choose to kind of pull those in. Then it'll be a lot easier for them to, to move forward. We also, you know, I think when, I want to be conscientious of thinking about. Operations and academics as two separate things. Um, we, the learning environment that we develop, whether it's online or in person. Um, can really, how do I, how do I say this? So we have so many resources and so much information and so much potential to give students the opportunity to learn. Through real world experiences, um, with each other across subjects. Uh, that they can have an impact, a positive impact in the world. And, and so we've been supporting this type of program. We generally frame it as campuses of living laboratory on, you know, on my team. We've been supporting this, um, primarily through a series of, of external grants. Uh, we've gotten somewhere in the long lines of about $250,000 worth of grants in the last couple of years, probably more than that. I have to look back and, uh, over the last eight. But we've, we've gotten a lot of, uh, uh, support for promoting that type of effort. What we're seeing is that these students that were in that eight years ago, when they came on as interns, have now gone through a fellowship. And are now, um, graduates of college and they're coming back to me applying for jobs on my team. Um, and so we, like, just from an anecdotal perspective, I know that what we're doing there works. Because the folks that are interested in sustainability, the folks that are, um, passionate about addressing environmental and climate justice issues. Uh, and the folks that grow knowledge and feel supported in, in trying to make a difference in the, in their local community. Are going out and doing great, are doing those things in the real world. And so, um, and so we can provide that environment. So, and, and we can combine our operations and academic efforts. And in so doing, we can, um, we can actually extract. The most value from those, right? So when we're talking about environmental justice, when we're talking about resources, we're not just talking about ecological resources. We're not just talking about, uh, you, you know, financial resources. We're not just talking about, you know, the broader social issues. We're talking about people's individual cognitive development stages and their mental resources and, and their, their. Their passion and capability to actually make a difference in this world. And that's the things that we're able to do through a combined effort of social. Uh, through combined effort of operational and academic, uh, uh, connection. It creates, creates that interdisciplinary, it creates that, uh, that, uh. Externalization, uh, externalization of value in a positive way. I'll leave it there, cause I know this is a big topic and we can talk about it more and we're probably at time.
Thank you, uh, chancellor Claire.
I, I'm not sure quite how I'm gonna follow that, cause that's such a beautiful statement, lots of, uh, you can tell if you've never met Joe. He lives this, breathes this. I, I don't find any irony that you're wearing a green jacket today, Joe, for this. Um, and so trustee Petriti, I mean, this is, this is the beauty of these retreats that hopefully are less formal. And I can't wait for us all to be in the same room at the same time. But these, these are where you get to ask these questions. So I'm gonna answer it in a, a bit more of a, as a former, uh, curriculum committee chair, former member of the academic senate. I think this is an op- these are where the policy questions get asked. And so if this is of interest to the trustees, we can certainly go to our academic senate and say. Hey, the trust, you know, there's an interest in, um, looking at our graduation requirements. And, uh, might we think of, um, integrating sustainability along with, um, uh, you know, uh, anti racism efforts? Within the curriculum so that, it's, so Joe's giving you that, that philosophical, you know, this is what we're trying to accomplish with it. But that would be the mechanism we would, would use if that's an interest of the board is to engage the academic senate. Really as our faculty experts and see if this is an area that they, you know, that they might like to look at.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes, I have a, I have a question for, uh, vice chancellor Nunes. Um, what's the time, what's the timeline for our envi- environmental, uh, strategic plan? Uh, when, when might we, um. Have that, uh, completed and get more information about, uh, what, what our future goals are and how we can contribute to them?
Yeah, again, as I mentioned earlier, we just kicked off, but we're in the process of developing an RFQ, RFP. Um, I, I want to say that normally takes four to six months. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
And again, we're doing that, uh, in alignment with our facilities condition estimate, i.e. looking at our building systems.
Yeah, no, I, I just, uh, wanted to make sure, like I said, um, as we talk about this, we won't eat, obviously there's budgeting.
That's correct.
You know, support that we want to make sure that that's on our radar, um, that we're, you know, while this is still down the line, that as a board. We're, uh, being kept in the loop to make sure that we're able to support these goals.
Yeah, well, it, it, funding for the strategic energy plan, we have funding for that, funding for the facilities condition, uh, index, we have funding for that. And then funding for the facilities master plan that follows those two components. There's, there's funding set aside, uh, uh, for that. Um, I want to say that the facility condition index and the strategic energy plan is probably a four or five month process. The, once we get into the facilities master planning process, which, uh, which of course the board is in, involved. That in itself, sometimes it's about a, a nine-month, uh, uh, process. Um, but I'm more than willing to, you know, send out a timeline in terms of when those processes are gonna take place. And I see in the chat, if I may, if I can just share, uh, uh, screen. Uh, trustee Pimental, this is basically to, to answer your question and Joe, please chime in. Uh, this is one of our, uh, charts there in terms of our kilowatt usage across the three campuses. We're at, uh, uh, fifteen million. Uh, and in terms of the second part of your question, renewable energy, Kenyatta College. Half of the electricity used at Kenyatta College, correctly from wrong, Joe, comes from our, our solar initiative that was put down there. If I want to say maybe seven years ago. We do not have renewable energy at the other two campuses, cause each time that we've gone out to assess, uh, uh, to put a solar farm on those two campuses. It, it just didn't pencil out. And so we, you know, didn't move forward with those particular, uh, initiatives.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Jose. Appreciate it. Okay, well, you know what? This has been a great discussion. Uh, and, um, I, I'm wondering if it's time for us to start summarizing a little bit. Uh, obviously, the main items that we're talking about today at the retreat, we had a list of twenty-three items. They're all important, but we wanted to pull off the first six that we thought were the ones we wanted to deal with. And so I'm glad we had an opportunity to share our thoughts with all of you as well and let you know that we want to continue with this. Uh, Jose?
Yeah, just one last question to answer, uh, uh, trustee Pimental's question. Uh, uh, Skyline College has a solar installer program. I don't know because of COVID where we are with that. But pre-COVID, the, they had a, a program there, I think, uh, twenty, thirty students, uh, uh, per semester. But I don't know where that is now, uh, uh, pre-COVID.
Uh, Dr. Nina? And I might, yeah.
Oh, well, it's, we have a whole energy systems technology program that includes the solar application. And I believe these are only, uh, certificate programs, but I want to verify that, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I would also add that, yeah, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, it's hard.
Yeah, go ahead.
To see everybody all once, I apologize. And I, and I would ask, I think Jim Miller's still here, I would ask the other two presidents to chime in. But if you look across the, uh, district, we have a number of workforce programs that are either dealing with facilities management, instrumentation. So I mean, it goes beyond solar. So, you know, I think what we might want to do is weave that all together for you. So you have a kind of a one pager, so you get kind of a, a, you know, a broad view of all of the, uh, sustainability or sustainability related. Um, curriculum that we offer, even if it isn't under a sustainability banner. We'll, we'll go ahead and make sure that, yeah.
And when you do that, in that way, that if it's not, it should certainly be on the websites, right? Even of the district to say, here's the district you come to, to see this amazing array and set of programs and certificates. And internships that we have. So it's a terrific opportunity, I think, from recruitment perspective as well.
Okay, well, um, let me just make sure we have everyone's comments in here. Um, so I, I guess, uh, the, the administration kind of understands now the issues that we brought up today. We want to hear more about this and, and all of these particular items, uh, where we are with them and where, how we're moving forward with it. Uh, I think definitely we would like, uh, the academic summit involved as well. Uh, and, um, so, um, perhaps, um, I, I guess my colleagues and I would probably want to have follow-up on this. Um, a lot of the issues were brought up. We talked about vehicles, we talked about. Action items, uh, that we could look at at the campuses now that they're empty, uh, the kickoff of the strategic plan, uh, curriculum sharing. Um, and, uh, a lot of other things, uh, such as seeing how other entities, school districts and the like are dealing with these things. To see if we can pick up anything, even though it looks like we're out in front of the game, uh, there's always something we can learn from someone else. And I think we're, we're, we're basically telling all of you, uh, which you do already, that, uh, feel free to think outside the box on this. And, and, uh, come up with any other ideas that you have or thoughts, uh, that can move us in, in this direction. Uh, when do you think we could have, uh, some follow-up on this coming back to the board? Uh, chancellor, you want to think about that and get back to us?
Sure, yeah.
Yes, trustee Petriti?
In that set of questions, I would like to hear, like, what is the kind of support in terms of policy that you think would be a good next step here as well? Cause I heard Joe saying there's many efforts, we don't necessarily have this on, as a, at a coordinated way. What are some of those, those things? So, and, and, uh, president Nurse, this will certainly get, we'll get to this as well. But I, you know, I'm going to be asking questions like those, those programs that have these courses around environmental sustainability and, and. Social, uh, justice, environmental issues, are they openly licensed? And can people use those resources across campus and can they be remixed and used in the greater worlds as well? So.
Great, then you know what? Maybe that's something you will be able to, uh, uh, answer when you come back and, 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 and talk to us about this. All right, um, anything further on this item then?
I may leave you with just one closing.
Yes.
Thought here.
Yes.
Um, one is, again, thank you for surfacing this and for, and for all the questions. Um, I, I've taken some pretty good notes here and I'll follow up with Jose and my team to make sure that, you know, we get you what you, what other. You know, resources you might need. Um, I just want you to remember that high-quality accessible education, what we are doing every day is fundamental to global sustainability. Right? Um, there's, but there's lots of, there, there is lots more that we could be doing. While the successes that we've had, the, the recognition that we've gained, the progress that we've made are all good, there are more things that we could be doing. Will it ever be enough? I don't know. But we, we don't really have a whole lot of time to decide. We, the science tells us that our, our climate is crashing and, and it's affecting, uh, the poor. It's affecting those that are, that are, have had less to input on the problem, uh, at a much more disproportionate, uh, level. Um, and, and so we have, we have, again, we had this opportunity and this responsibility to, to take this challenge. And to resolve it both through our operations and through our academics, both through our pedagogy and through our people, both through our policies and our practices. In our relationships and our connections. So as you think about, um, I would just urge it as, as you think about, um, you know, innovative. Uh, some of the other things are later in your agenda in terms of innovative teaching and learning practices, that some of the things regarding. Uh, social inequity, uh, inclusion and diversity and how we address that. This is part of that conversation as well. It, it cannot be easily pulled apart. And I know you recognize that. I just want to reaffirm that. And, and, and let you know that we're thinking about that too, at our, at our organizational level. And, and really trying to put that into practice every day. So thank you so much for your time. I, I recognize that you're all spending this, uh, Saturday. Outside of your normal Saturday activities. I really appreciate it.
Well, we also appreciate the fact that, uh, Jose and Joe and Michelle are here today to, uh, support this discussion. And every time we, uh, hear you, uh, uh, it always gives me that comfort level. Because obviously I see the knowledge and the passion that is coming out of, out of, uh, your, your part of what we do here at the colleges. And, uh, I, I know that it's not just being, uh, neglected. And, uh, I think it's, uh, it was a good discussion that we had. And something that we want to continue with. So I appreciate, uh, the input today and we look forward to hearing more about it. Okay, well, that being said, we're moving on to our next topic. And our next topic is, uh, the discussion of best practices in human resources. That achieve diversity, equity, inclusion and fairness. Um, chancellor, you want to introduce this as well?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll make this very quick. Uh, I'm really glad this topic is, is on the agenda today. And as you know, you know, you look at our administrative systems and it's really, and we have chief, we have a chief financial officer, we have a chief technology officer. And now we finally have a chief human resources officer. And those, those three systems intersect, um, and, and are dependent upon each other. So it's really good to have this structure. Uh, and we're looking at all the, I know we're gonna have a, a more substantive conversation. In the next, um, round of, um, discussion. But it's time for us to look at all of these systems and look at processes and procedures. And, uh, Cheng Yu, um, I, I know you've all met him. He's literally, I think, um, looking at the date, just a little more than a month. But he's had a chance to kind of take a lot of what we're doing in and has some ideas that he would, uh, and some initial thoughts. That he wanted to kind of just share with the board. He also wants to hear from you. Uh, Cheng Yu and I also met with trustee Nurse, since this was his agenda item and, and had a bit of a conversation the other day. So at this point, um, first again, I want to welcome Cheng Yu to, to the, to the district and he's already doing great stuff. And I'll turn it over to him and, and I think he's gonna have a, a bit of a conversation. And then certainly, we look forward to hearing your questions and comments. So I'll stop there.
Yeah, thanks so much, Mike. Uh, thanks so much for the opportunity to present in front of you, uh, the board. So first I just wanted to emphasize I received tremendous support, not only from Mike, but the chancellor's cabinet, our labor partners, my team here at HR. Also the community colleges that we consistently, you know, delve out and really enhance our support from, and also our other stakeholders. I also have my colleague David Fune here to help answer any questions and feedback. Um, but please allow me to really, you know, articulate my vision for human resources, uh, of the little time that I'm here. Um, so my vision really does upon three different philosophies, it's looking at innovation, accountability and collaboration. So in that sense, um, I have identified a number of priorities that kind of evolves around three things. The first thing is to ensure equity and belonging and community curation through stakeholder collaboration on people and cultural operation services. That we provide to the colleges and district employees. Secondly, we want to build and enhance groundwork and framework in order to enhance stakeholder engagements. And lastly, ensure accountabilities through analytics, accessibility, record keeping, people development. Four letters formalization from human resources and research. So through these three things, you'll see some of the priorities that have identified and start the groundwork on, which include. You know, building and orientation on boarding experience, so that speaks to the experience curation. Website modernization for human resources that looks at accessibility for accountability. Uh, reimagining Title IX processes and data accountability that also speaks to experience curation and analytics. Uh, a uniform progressive discipline guideline, um, that speaks to the groundwork and the framework that we're building with stakeholder engagements. Uh, comprehensive classification processes, and that again speaks to the groundwork and framework with stakeholder. And that again speaks to the groundwork and framework with stakeholder engagements. People analytics, including diversity and data analytics to provide us guidance on strategy that speaks to accountability for analytics, enhanced record keeping, speaking to accountability. And lastly, training and workforce development that speaks to people developments. So these are the priorities that we have identified that we have started working on. Of course, this is a longer list. So we welcome any inputs and any questions in terms of what we're doing currently and what we plan to do in the upcoming future.
Great. It sounds like you've got a very long list of things. And how did you arrive at these items? Did you, did you work together with the presidents, with the staff? And to help, to help you come up with this set of priorities? Who did you engage with you to be able to come up with this? And, you know, what is the team that'll be working with you on this?
Yeah, definitely. So I have started engaging not only the Chancellor's Cabinet, labor partners, my HR team, as well as my colleagues at different community colleges within states. I continue to meet with different vice presidents and deans. My goal is to meet on a one-on-one basis to, for as many people as possible in order to gain insights and feedback in a lot of these priorities. So I have started that process and that's where I got this list from. But I plan to continue and have this as an evolving list as I meet with different stakeholders.
Any board members? Yes, trustee Petridis?
It's a great, it's a great list. And I'm glad that you've, and I know that also being new, you know, you're just trying to talk and listen and understand the, the landscape, so to speak. So that sounds terrific. I'm just curious sort of like how you're starting, like what's on your to-do list next week? You know, as you, yeah, what's on your to-do list next week? That's the question.
Yeah, definitely. So it's, it's a, it's a long list of things, but I just keep it like, like a brief summary. So I plan to continue to engage with our labor partners. There's mediation upcoming that I plan to be involved in as well. I'm going to, you know, continue working on everything pretty much on this list, engaging stakeholders, engaging my colleagues to assist with this process and also engaging with IT and also finance in the process. I also continue to meet on a day-to-day basis with a lot of different stakeholders in our community as well to gain their feedback and looking at different shifts that we can obtain in this process. Continue, you know, collaborating with the Anti-Racism Council, looking at what we can do beyond also just anti-racism in terms of the areas of belonging and diversity and inclusion. Because the area of diverse inclusion belonging is a lot, it's, it's, it's very broad in scope. And coming from being the chief diversity officer of a department in the county of Los Angeles in which we have, you know, according to many measurements in the media out there as one of the most diverse regions of the country. I understand a lot of nuances and the needs that's not only within our community as an employee, but also be broadcasted to our greater community with our students as well as our community within, you know, not only the base and but beyond that as well. So, you know, the goal is to make us, you know, the front runner and also the pioneer in a lot of these efforts as well. So it's, it's lots of meetings, lots of engagements and lots of, you know, keeping my tabs on different projects and programs to keep them, keep going as well as really formalizing a process to keep us accountable. So I have, I have working meetings. Those typically take four to eight hours straight because we want to build a prototype at the end of the meeting. So instead of having very short meetings all the time, we want to have something built. And that's always my, my vision going forward and that also enhances accountability as well. So, so yeah, it's, I apologize. It's a long-winded answers to your question.
That's a good answer.
Lots of different things. Yeah, thanks so much.
Trustee Goodman, I see you on muted.
Yes. Yeah, again, welcome. My question is, is about the anti-racist practices that we're trying to implement here. You mentioned the, the committee. And I was wondering, I know that while this district isn't, our practices aren't intentionally racist, but in some ways we're not intentionally anti-racist. So could you speak to how you will work to deconstruct some of those practices to be more intentional when it comes to hiring and retention of quality employees?
Yeah, definitely. So I think in terms of strategizing on that data, we need to look at where we've been in order to be where we are going to come. So let me share this screen real quickly. Again, this is a draft data, but I would love to be able to share this and gather some thoughts if I can. So here's a, just a PowerPoint presentation. Again, the data sits in its raw form. Here you're looking at applicant gender shifts in 2019, 2020, we're tracking 2021 in terms of what we've done so far and what we want to get to. And nowadays we look at gender as gender identity. So like to shift, you know, voluntary identification towards that realm as well. The next slide shows applicant race and ethnicity in terms of identifying, in terms of the EEO buckets where everything fall. And I want to thank my colleague Jenny for helping me with this data as well. So we want to be accountable and this is what we're looking at. Again, it's in, it's in primacy phase as well. This next slide shows applicant for race and ethnicity, again, within the EEO buckets by division in 2019, 2020. I know the data is a little hard to see, I apologize for that, but we try to fit everything on here in terms of different divisions. So we want us, our efforts to be guided by data. So right now we're in the process of doing that. So I can't speak to in terms of long-term strategy, how that would be, but the idea is that we're going to get there and I know how to get there.
Chen, can I ask you, we're looking at this data. Now you have studied this data. What is this data telling us? What, what, what have you discerned from this data that helps you understand where we are and where we need to go? What is the data telling us?
Yeah, so the data is telling us that we need to be more intentional in terms of what we're recruiting from and how we're recruiting individuals. And in terms of how do we keep these individuals within the district? So it's not just the recruiting portion, but we want the curation of the experience in creating an ecosystem that promotes diversity, inclusion, equity in our, in our district and each one of our colleges. So this data is showing that there's still efforts to be made. There are certain gaps that still needs to be intensified and needs to be also identified in an intersectional manner. So this data, again, it's based on EEO buckets. Now, when you combine the data intersectionally, it'll tell you a different story. However, the district in its current capacity doesn't, you know, identify a lot of these gaps through intersectional means. So therefore the opportunity is there for us to potentially collect this data and drill in on what is the gap that we're missing and how we're going to go about in order to not only recruit, but in terms of cultivating an ecosystem of inclusion, diversity and belonging in our district. So, so the data is showing, you know, in terms of gender balance, there could be some work there. In terms of race and ethnicity, just falling within the EEO buckets as they are, there are also a lot of efforts that could be made to be able to reach out to, you know, historically marginalized populations. The data is also telling me we're missing a lot of, you know, opportunities such as are we identifying, you know, are we asking self voluntary identification of LGBTQ employees and applicants and, you know, students maybe down the road? Are we identifying veterans, active military members so we can support them better? Are we recruiting them or being accountable for that purpose? Are we also again, looking at intersectionality in order to really draw in on what we're missing out on? So this data is showing me that there's gaps that we can look at, but in terms of just looking at the data itself, it's simply not sufficient for us to really drill down on what really we're missing here. So I plan to, you know, in, in the future, really overlap and look at that intersectional data as we collect them. And then all that will be formalized in a strategy in terms of what we should be doing and what we can do in order to maximize our presence, in order to ensure accessibility and be accountable for everything that we do. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, trustee Oliver. I'm mute. Well, thank you and welcome aboard. I think this is our first real conversation with you. And you quickly ran through a long list of items and I was trying to take notes, but let me, I guess, make a few comments on a few of those items. One, you mentioned establishing a uniform progressive discipline framework, I believe. And I'll just encourage you in that area where I think it's largely a question of training. Well, first, making sure the rules are, are, are very clear. You know, that there are specific rules. If certain things occur, they lead to certain potential consequences, how they're addressed. You know, the, the rights of employees, the, the, the rights of union representative employees and so forth in that process. All very important, but I think the key here is training of supervisors, training of managers so that we are very consistent. Because this has been an area, you know, we, we as a board assume everything is going well. That's I think our basic assumption. Our, our, our staff is doing their job, things run well. It's only when something's not going well that it kind of comes before the board. Okay? So, so maybe we, we only learn about the, the ones that are the problems where the rules were not clear, the processes were not followed, the record keeping was inadequate. There are allegations that discipline is not meted out fairly and consistently. So I do think this is a very important area and an area where establishing the rules and then training the supervisors in, in, in what those processes are, you know, respecting rights of employees and, and record keeping and documentation is absolutely crucial. I'll just mention a couple of other things and I think I'll talk about some of this a little later under a different topic. But, you know, I do think there are some areas that are worth study, either through your department or perhaps external study. And, and that includes the establishment of job classifications, the establishment, how people get reclassified. I'm talking here about administrative and executive positions where jobs are reclassified, individuals are reclassified into different positions. And to the best of my knowledge, I've asked questions about this, this is only done through internal. I think it's called a desk audit. There's no benchmarking. In other words, there's no way of looking at what we do with these classifications compared to our peers, our other districts. Another area that I think needs to be looked at is the extent to which positions are filled on an interim basis rather than on a permanent basis. And the interim then somehow becoming the permanent person without perhaps the opportunity for a fair, equitable and open opportunity for all potential interested persons within and outside the district when appropriate to have a fair shot at applying for those positions. So those are just a, a couple of items that I would want to discuss, you know, put on your radar screen and hope that, you know, you'll be looking at those things.
Yeah, thanks so much for that insight, trustee Oliver. So what you're speaking to in terms of progressive discipline, in terms of making the rule clear and also articulating that training and record keeping to our managers and supervisors, that is the core in terms of what we're looking at in terms of building this process out. But thank you for that. It's amazing to have support there from the board. In terms of the classification system, there are plans to look at the classification system. I come from a place where there's a very sophisticated classification system that's not only accountable, but really speaks to what we should be looking at, at a public agency. So not only within the community college system, but beyond that as well. So in terms of the interim versus the permanent basis, in terms of reclassification, our plans are really to kind of overhaul the process with stakeholder engagements in order to make sure the rules are clearly defined in terms of, you know, benchmarking, clear benchmarking, clear accountability and as reporting out to the board, you know, that essence is documented and projected within those documents as well. So all around, you're speaking to the core and the heart of these two items that we're looking at. So thank you so much for that.
Could, could I just add one more? And this came up at our last meeting. I raised these questions with our financial auditors. And I, again, I think a lot of what you're doing ties and what you, you know, what you may be recommending also ties to board policy or board procedures. We have kind of these two things. And I always confuse what's a policy and what's a procedure. But I think some of the, the, the work you're doing needs at some point to be formalized. And I'll just give you one example and this came up at the last board meeting. And that is, you know, whether it's a reclassification, a separation agreement and so on and so forth. There should be a real simple checklist that, you know, i- if you're the, where the buck stops in terms of, of effectuating these things, right? As the Director of Human Resources, that any termination, any separation agreement, any reclassification, there needs to be some kind of checklist that includes, let's look at the minutes of the board meeting where this was approved. Let's look at the item that was on the board agenda to make sure that what, you know, is coming to us maybe from, I don't know, department head, a college president, whoever it may be, was actually brought through the process and received board approval rather than skipping that step. I think it's essential that that be on the checklist, that someone visually reviews, okay, I see it was on the board agenda. I see what the item is. I'm looking at the board minutes and now I have the authority to effectuate the decision that the board made. I think that, you, you, I just saw Chen's, Chen Yu's comment. And I, I think that that is critical as well when there is a file that has been opened that, that moves towards a settlement or termination or whatever. There should be that closing letter. That's the last thing that's on that file that shows exactly what steps were taken and how the matter ended. So you can pick it up in a year or five years or 10 years and know exactly how it ended and not have to try and recreate it by memory or whatever else. And, and that's the best practice. And, and I see you've noted that as well. And so, I mean, there's a lot of things and our policies are obviously going to have to be updated in areas. And even the job descriptions and classifications, many of them probably were drafted several years ago. Technology alone may, especially within our clerical staff and other areas where, you know, we have certain specifications that they have to have skill levels for this job, which now maybe aren't, aren't current with, you know, today's technology. All of those things, you know, there's a lot of things. And so I, I, I see that you have nailed them on your list. It's, it's, it's going to be a, a journey to get from A to Z and you've got to prioritize them and, and do it the way that you need to do. We as a board are here to be able to support you and your department and whatever you need because this is a high priority for us. And so we're, we're happy to be engaged and to be prepared to, you know, take any actions that we need to make it go faster and, and, and to just allow you to do your job better because obviously human resources is all about who we are, all the people that work here. And they're the face of our district to the community. We have to make sure that, you know, we're doing it in a way that is fair, equitable and, and understandable by everyone. Yes, Chancellor Claire?
Yeah, and oh, yeah, just very quickly, and I know we want to continue the conversation. I want to make sure all the trustees have a chance to engage with Cheng Yu. But hopefully what you're seeing just in, just this, you know, kind of first conversation with your new chief, chief human resources officers. What we're trying to do here, and, and I believe Cheng Yu is really doing a nice job just right out of the bat, is we need both overall strategy. You've heard a little bit about his strategic direction. And that's what I expect out of all our, our, you know, those at that chief level. But also very, in very real terms, the roll up your sleeves, practical. But also, very, in very real terms, the roll up your sleeves, practical, you know, assess our systems and make the corrections that need to be made within the strategy. So that's, that's the direction we're trying to head here with human resources. And frankly, all of our, all of our major systems. So I just wanted to add that. It's, you've got to have a blend of the two. And we're lucky to have this gentleman leading that effort.
President Marino.
Yes, I just wanted to sort of share what my experience has been since I started as president. And I think we're doing something right, because every hire that I've been involved with has had a wide and diverse pool, which is such a relief to me. And I think we've hired a person of color at every stage of hiring since I've joined the district. And one of the things that I think is so important is the board's and the district's stance on anti-racism and having those conversations, because I do believe that when we take a strong stance against racism and anti-blackness, then people see an opportunity and want to apply to the district. And I think that's part and parcel of what we're seeing. So I appreciate that.
Thank you for that observation. I'm happy to open it up to anyone else that has any questions or comments or share any thoughts. Well, great. And I think, you know what, your presentation was excellent. Thank you, Chen Yu, for laying out what your goals are. And especially on such short notice, being here for such a short period of time. I'm sure once you really get into it, you probably, with all of this, just scratched the surface. I know that you have a great staff there. David, you have a wealth of knowledge of being here for all this time, and we appreciate that. And I know that that's going to be shared as part of the team. And so I guess what I think we would like is that as you progress through these steps and get to the various stages where we need to come back for board further engagement on topics or reports. Feel free to put them on and let us know where we're going, what our progress is. So we know that we're making progress in these areas. And they don't have to be big, long reports. But let us know, you know, as frequently as you think. And either at board meetings or through memos or whatever, where we're going. And anything that we can do to support you and to, you know, make it easier for you to do what you need to do and to bring us to where we need to be. Anyone else want to contribute to this discussion? And I'm glad that we had a chance to have it. All right. Well, then, thank you so much, Chen Yu. I appreciate that. And everyone else that has commented on this particular item. And I guess we're ready to move on. Would you like to take a break here? Should we just keep going? I think we're doing okay. Okay, that means we're going to keep going here. So our next item is the discussion of board governance practices. Chancellor, back to you to kick it off, please.
Well, this is actually a board discussion.
That was a great kickoff. That was a great kickoff.
Yeah, we actually, I never thought I'd say this in a retreat. I think it was the first time, but we're, and I'm going to jinx it, but we're actually well ahead of schedule.
Do not say that. This is like we're pitching the no hitter. This is my no hitter right here.
We actually have until noon for this particular item. So anytime President Nurse, you feel it's time to take a break, let us know and we can do that. But we've got lots of time allocated for this. We want to hear your ideas. And I'll just leave it at that. This is really a discussion, I think, for us to hear from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to kick off discussion of best practices, of a discussion of board governance practices? Yes, how did I know, trustee Oliver?
Okay, well, thank you.
It's alphabetical. That must have been it.
Well, I asked that this one be put on the agenda. So thank you. And I hope we don't take till noon, but I think there's a lot of potential for us to spend time discussing here. And I was trying to think of how to, to open this. I guess I would start by saying, you know, the work I do, my day job, which for many years was as a union organizer, then as a legislative advocate lobbyist, to use a less pleasant term. Now as a consumer advocate, I've always described leadership as walking a tightrope. And the tightrope, for example, you know, when you're working on legislation and you're advocating and trying to achieve the maximum attainable outcome against, you know, opposition or resistance. On the one hand, a pure, non, you know, compromising stand and lose, right? That falls off the tightrope on one side. On the other side, it can be too easy to find compromise and find agreement. And, you know, fall short of what you're trying to attain. So it's how do you kind of keep walking that tightrope to get to the goal, to get to the maximum without, you know, falling off on one side or the other. And being a trustee has probably, for me, been the most difficult and most frustrating tightrope walk of my career. You know, and I hope we've learned from our experiences. Not to rehash the past, but to learn, to try to improve, to try to evaluate how we do our jobs best. And I'll start by saying, we are elected by the residents of San Mateo County. We are the stewards of the people of San Mateo County for the community colleges. It's a great district. We do great, wonderful things transforming the lives of tens of thousands of people each year. But it is the board that reports to the people, and I think that's where I start. And in turn, we delegate to our chancellor and through our chancellor to our staff to implement policies that we establish and to run the overall day-to-day operation of the district and the colleges. So we have, if you will, our own tightrope. This is how I look at it. We want to work in a supportive way, in a collaborative way with our executives, with our staff, with all stakeholders. We also have to maintain sufficient independence from our administration to be doing our job, which includes monitoring and if necessary, correcting the direction and the actions of our institution. We've got to figure out how we nurture that collaborative relationship with our staff. And at the same time, stand back sufficiently to establish procedures, policies, accountability measures to make sure that we are providing excellent services, that we're taking good care with our resources and our finances. And that we're operating in a way that's free and fair, free of unfair or any improper kinds of activities. So we're late persons by definition. We may, we do have a professional educator, expert on our board, and that brings a lot of value. But that's because someone won an election. We've had other people who have educational administration backgrounds or classroom backgrounds, but that's because they won an election. We're not expected to be a full-time board. We're not expected to be experts in higher education. We each bring some professional background, which enhances, I think, how we all operate. I mean, I've learned a lot from other trustees who have business backgrounds, who have legal backgrounds, who have, you know, social service backgrounds. And that all enhances our effectiveness. But we are here part-time. And we're not, I don't believe it's our job to be micromanaging or scrutinizing or trying to dissect things. But I think it is our job to figure out when it is necessary for us to have objective review and analysis to make sure that we're getting full and complete data. We're not having things that are filtered. We're not having things brought to us that are, if you will, slanted towards a particular outcome that administration may want us to, you know, they want to lead us towards. So I have two specific proposals, and they're not new. You've all heard these before. But I'm hoping maybe with a fresh eyes and learning from our experience, the board will embrace these. And they're not the whole picture, but these are two. The first I raised four years ago at a board retreat. And that is, I believe, part of our duty in reporting to the people includes that there are operational programs that require the board, not our administration, the board, to hire neutral experts for the purpose of conducting what is often called a performance audit. Now, that is not the audit that people think of, a financial audit, which we have done each year by neutral experts. Looking at how a particular operation is working. Looking at the research, the literature in the field on how to run a particular kind of operation. Interviewing the folks in our district, including administrators, faculty, staff, students, others that are participants or affected by the program. Doing benchmarking. How do other districts do it? How do other public agencies do it? If appropriate, how do other private agencies do it? And bringing back to the board reports that may include recommendations. No one's going to tell us how to change what we're doing. But I would find it informative for us to receive that kind of unfiltered, neutral, expert information on programs. I'll give you a few examples. District contracting practices. Something that we've talked about, I think, would be a good example for bringing in this kind of outside, neutral, board-hired, report-to-the-board evaluation. District travel practices. District practices, I touched on this in the last section, regarding the structure, classification, pay ranges, et cetera, of executives and high-level administrators. I'll mention, you know, one other, one or two others. Our international education program. And I mentioned that only because it was an area of great frustration for me over many years. Where I think it's now been clearly demonstrated that the data we received was incomplete. I'll just say it was incomplete. I went back and looked at reports where I did this just kind of getting ready for tonight, where we were told over and over and over repeatedly, it is a $10 million net benefit to the district. 10 million have come in above and beyond the costs. Well, we now, I think, after Chancellor Claire became our chancellor, he ran the numbers, and before COVID, it was a $4.8 million net increase. I kept arguing with our prior chancellor that I saw it at about 6 million. Oh, no, no, it's 10. So to not have that argument. You settle that by saying, let's just have someone else come in and take an objective look at it. And, you know, I'm just throwing those out as examples. I'm not saying that those would be ones I'd want. There may be others other trustees want. So that's item one. And then let me just get to item two, and then we'll throw it open. And that is for 16 months, 16 months ago, at a board retreat that was open to the public, the idea of having an internal auditor is a common term, but it may not be the only term. A position that reports to the board and that looks at various practices. And that could include working with the board, for example, on the first item I mentioned. You know, looking at who are the experts, who are the firms out there that can provide this service that we're looking, if the board wants to do external performance audits? Who's in the field? Get RFPs from them. Work with the board to help, you know, establish the scope of the work for an external audit. I think another function for an internal auditor would be to work with the board to systematically review our policies and procedures. We do review them as required on a six-year cycle to make sure we're, you know, in compliance with accreditation standards. Mostly, that's a pro forma review, where we bring each chapter to the board and we review it. And we say, okay, we need to change whose title gets to sign a check, for example. It's pro forma, or the law changed, so we have to change this. But there are policy implications. I'll just mention one. Use of district funds to purchase alcohol. Okay? That was a controversy a few years ago because there was a problem that took the attention of the press. It was a violation of our board policy. So what did the board do? The board changed the policy to say, we frown on it, but we'll allow our executives, their responsible adults with a lot of judgment, to use their best judgment. That would be one example where it's a policy decision. It's not just keeping in compliance with changes in state law. Is that something we want to do? Or is it something we don't want to do? So I think there are a number of these, you know, potentially for board review. And that would be another function for an internal auditor. And then I'd say another function would be to make sure we have proper whistleblowing procedures in place. You know, when and if the occasion arises that people feel safe and able to come forward with with their, you know, with their concerns. And there's plenty of work to be done in terms of compliance with rules and regulations. That could be another function. So those are my two. That's my wish list. For the board to say, yes, there are times when we hire board-directed, board-hire, report-to-the-board, external performance audits by experts and establishing an internal auditor position that would report to the board. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me that much time. I appreciate it.
No problem. Yes, I see trustee Pimentel, you've unmuted.
Thank you. I agree completely with Richard's overview of the subject and enthusiastically support where he is going with this. In fact, I know, I think as a point of order, we're not supposed to take any actions today, but I would like to.
We're not taking any actions today as far as that goes. This is only for discussion. You're right.
Thank you. I would like to request the the board president and chancellor and board vice president to include on our next public agenda a specific discussion with a proposal to adopt this position or create this position of internal auditor. Taking on the functions that Richard described. And I'd like to have the opportunity to have the board vote on that and determine whether or not we're going to create this position and create this function. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Board members. All right. Well, you know, I see you have unmuted trustee Petritis. I'll let you go ahead of me. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to just reiterate what trustee Hallibur said as well. And as a newcomer to the board, you know, these first six-plus weeks or so, there have just have been multiple occasions where I think if we had had some of these, if we had had either of these pieces in place, would have been to great benefit. Would have been to great benefit. And so I just, I don't really have anything to add, just that I, I thank you, trustee Hallibur for sort of bringing that so eloquently to us. In that way. I'm sure there are some details to work out of what that would look like. But I am also curious to, if, you know, since this is more of a study session, I am curious from the administrators here. I don't know if that's appropriate, President Nurse, but I would like to hear a little bit of, of what they think as well. So.
Absolutely. Chancellor.
Would it be okay? Yeah, yeah. So you know what? This is such a healthy discussion and I, I'm only going to speak for myself. I, I don't dare to speak for, for anybody else, but again, they do report to me. So, you know. But I, I want to start by. First of all, acknowledging your role as elected trustees and as representatives of the public. I, I understand it. I've shared with many of you that I sit on the board of the San Francisco Credit Union. It's not an elected position. But when you have over 100,000 people with either money with that institution or, or they all do. Or significant financial transactions. I, I get it. I understand the, the, the responsibility that comes, particularly with the oversight function of the board. So. I, I. You know, there's a point where I really want to talk to you about my long-term goals as a chancellor, not the goals to June 30, but really, you know, at the end of this run for me. What do I hope to accomplish with all of you? And this. Item, this issue, this establishing the way of doing things with the board. So that you can feel good about being representatives of the public and you don't have to question, don't have to worry. Frankly, that's my number one priority because without that, it's, trustee Petrie's issues, it's impossible to get anything else done, frankly. So I actually welcome the conversation. I, I think there's different ways to get there and I think, I think there needs to be some discussion about that. But I understand what the end, I, I believe in talking to some of you individually, just, just in our, you know, monthly get togethers. I understand what the end goal is. So I, I actually welcome the conversation. It is my highest, believe it or not, it's the highest priority I have as chancellor for the long haul. Is to get us all collectively to the point where there, there doesn't have to be questions and whatever mechanisms. We can do to, you know, we can use to get there. I'm going to support. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. The only other thing that I do want to say is that trustee Hallibur, I think you mentioned before, you know, personnel. You only do as trustees, you hear about the, the, the worst stuff, right? And I do want to just, you know, I want to acknowledge the administration. The, the, and the staff that actually have to implement all of this stuff. We have thousands of transactions a month. Thousands. We have 1,800 employees. There's a lot that can go wrong very quickly. And I want to remind us all that, yes, we've got to look at some of these things that. Sometimes even from a monetary standpoint are, are actually immaterial, but I realize they can get you on the front page of the paper. I, I understand that fully. But I also want you all to keep in mind and balance those, those concerns against. The stuff that we just do extraordinarily well every day. The foundation that this is built upon is accreditation. Say what you will about accreditation, but there's 127 individual standards you have to meet. And the last time we were fully reaffirmed, I think we, across the entire district, we only had two recommendations. This is by an independent peer reviewed group. So you can be confident that the work that we're doing. At that level is good. It's solid. Doesn't mean we can't always continue to improve. And then I know I'm harping on the financial audit piece of it. I know there's, I'm not at all opposed to the performance auditing and. You know, there's always other things we have to do. But I do want to let you know that for those thousands of transactions, we have internal controls. That have been independently assessed and I specifically asked about compliance testing at the, at the last board meeting. Because I wanted to make sure that not only do we have the controls and we're doing the walkthrough, doesn't mean that we tweak some of them, particularly. Some items that need to go to the board on a more regular basis, but they're actually working and they've been tested and working as intended. So. That's what I'm trying to say is it, it doesn't, it doesn't mean we don't need to improve. We do. But I want to remind us all that the basic foundation, the structure is there and anything we build is, it's, it's built on solid ground. So. I'll stop there, but I'm 100% committed to working with all of you. Because I think we all want things to go smoother moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, President Marina, yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this and, you know, I'm in this, I'm new as well, but I'm in this, you know, 200%. And I support our chancellor and I, you know, if I were honest here, I, I think one of. The critically important things that we need. Is for the board to trust in what we do. And if an internal auditor, something like that gets us there. I think that is, is just super important because, you know, Skyline College. I'm just going to speak about our college. We have, we have significant needs, especially one. And eventually I see that we're going to need some more, you know, bond measure money to get the campus to where we want it to be. And. I want the community to have the faith in the work that we're doing. And if the board doesn't have faith in the work that we're doing. Then, you know, you can extrapolate from there, you know, what that means. And so. I really am in support of however we get there. We need to get there so that we trust each other and we move as a unit into our future, supporting each other. Thank you.
You know, I wanted to kind of build on that thought as well, and thank you for starting that. Because I, I don't have a problem with this concept. But I think that we need to understand a few things before we jump right in and say, we're going to bring in someone that is going to clean house and go from top to bottom. First of all, I think a lot of the, the need for the internal auditors on these things probably should have been during the last administration. And trustee Hallibur has indicated that he has raised it many times and it never moved forward. Because obviously there were concerns and we are dealing with them now as far as that goes. And I think that two of the critical elements of making this district move forward is number one. Number one is that there is clear direction from the board. And that the board is making the decisions. And I think that we are at that point right now. We have a chancellor that works for the board. And he understands his role and I think it filters down through the administration. And I think this board has made it very clear that we are the board. And that we will be making the, the policy decisions. We will be setting the direction and the tone. And I think that, that, that is a critical element, first of all, to be able to give clear direction from a unified board. So people know that, yes, this is the direction that we're going. And from that then develops the culture. Because I think unfortunately a culture develops when certain things come into play and, and, and. Personalities are involved and, and, and practices maybe fall by the wayside or are done in a different way or whatever. And then a culture develops. And I think it's for us as board members through our administrators to set the culture that we want for this district. And that everyone then basically gets on the same page and knows that this is how we're going to do things. We're not going to think about backdooring things. We're not going to think about taking it down a way that maybe the board isn't going to see or any. That should not come into people's minds. It shouldn't even be considered. It shouldn't even be a, an option for people to think that they're going to do their jobs in a way which is not the way it's supposed to be done. And in a way that takes it to an outcome that is not the outcome it's supposed to be and the proper outcome and the honest outcome. Honesty. Transparency, all these things that we talk about, that's part of the culture. And that has to get back into it. And you don't develop a culture overnight. You don't just. I say, we'll put it on, you know, an agenda and then we'll vote on and discuss it. And this is our new culture. Or we're going to bring somebody in that's going to straighten us all out and now we have a new culture. We have to set the example. We have to then constantly reinforce it all the time. And we need to know that the people that we have put in place in the district office, our presidents at the school. And their subordinates and their cabinets understand. And they buy in and they basically create this culture. Because it's not something that we legislate. And that is, that's critical because you know what? We can do whatever we want as far as that goes and. And, and, and bring in people and audit everything. And then, you know, I don't want this to be a situation where everyone thinks that there's. People looking over my shoulder all the time and I have to worry about what I'm doing because I'm going to get written up. Or you know what? I'm, I'm all for whistleblowers and people doing that, but there is a limit to that as well, you know? Everyone, I don't like what my boss just said to me and therefore I'm going to report him. I'm going to do this. Yes, encourage the proper things. But we don't want to open the door. So we basically subvert the process. And so we have to be careful. We have to, we have to move in measured steps. We need to see where we really need. To go in and do things that need to be fixed. If we can do them in-house, if we could bring in consultants to work with us on this, fine. I have no problem taking the steps to improve things. And I think we're hearing it from administration as well. They want that. We want clarity. We want, we want people to have faith in what we're doing and believe that we are doing the people's business in the proper way. But we also have to be careful that we don't knee jerk to the point that we create more problems. In the way we do it than is necessary. So this is my philosophical take on it. Yes, trustee Petrie.
So. I think you're speaking to the tightrope that trustee Hallibur articulated. And I don't think it is about cleaning house per se. I don't think it's about cleaning house at all. I think like all good democratic institutions, that there has to be a structure and a mechanism where continuous improvement can happen, right?
Yes.
And trustee Hallibur talks about four years ago, you know, to me again, as a newcomer, I say. Why are we having this conversation four years later still? It's never about one or two or three individuals, even though those may be perpetrating these kind of behaviors that we don't want. I mean, I, I hate to bring in the analogy of our current federal or our prior federal administration or government. You know, it wasn't about one individual, right? It was about a system where there were things in place that still needed to be addressed, right? Gerrymandering, filibusters, right? You can, you can name what all of those various things are. So. There are, there are conditions that are created that over time allowed, and I'm talking about now at the federal level. These things to, to be faced with the situation we are today, right? When you talk about the systems are designed to achieve the outcomes that they, they, that they got, right? I think that's a perfect example. So to me, it's trying to find in that tightrope, it is about saying, what are the structures? What is the culture we're trying to emulate? What are those behaviors? Absolutely. It's about trust. And building that and finding the right set of responsibilities. But I think our role as a board is really about. You know, setting and ensuring those, those conditions so that we do have that environment that can thrive in that way. And, and again, you can also say, well, you know, here at the district, we had some bad eggs. That's all over. Everything's new. I, I kind of want to, you know, that sounds good to me, but I also have been around long enough to understand that. Kinds of behaviors and practices and workarounds, you know, there's things that good people do in organizations. To get the work and the achievement and the goals that they want, that aren't necessarily helping. The organization is itself kind of spiral upwards. And so that's what I really hear when I hear trustee Hallibur's, you know, recommendations for these two pieces. It isn't about cleaning house. It isn't about starting over. It is really about ensuring we have those kinds of mechanisms in place.
Yes, trustee Goodman and then trustee Oliver.
Yeah, I think, you know, as we talk about the past, when we talk, when we listen in here, the recommendation that was made today. For me, the only thing that, that rings true is what was said earlier about innovation, accountability and collaboration. That's how we should be working as a board, understanding our, what trustee ship is. Understanding what our role is in light and I guess in honor of the Super Bowl being tomorrow, when you think about a team. A well-run team. You have individuals playing many different roles. And you cannot be successful. If one individual is looking down the line to see if the other individual is doing their job, you have to focus on your goal and your role. And I think we as a board have to do that. I understand completely that, yes, some issues have arisen. That we may want an independent auditor or an individual to do something for this specific reason. And maybe there's three or four specific reasons at any given time, but we have one employee. We do not create avenues because we can't govern and do our roles correctly. And say, let's create this other position to have them do our job for us. There has to be trust. We should not be looking down the line to expect this trust or to, to say we trust this person, but we're constantly looking at them, whether or not they're doing their job. Of course, our job. Has to do with serving as a check on this system. But we have to make sure we provide the, the opportunity for that work to happen. We can't say we don't trust this because of what someone else did or what an administration did in the past. We have to create opportunities to allow that trust to be created and fostered. As a goal, I mean, for me, when I think about governance and I was hoping we would talk about that and, and when you talk about leadership. We understand our roles as a board. We don't do. You know, we create goals in collaboration with administration. We listen, we support and we scrutinize. We serve as a fiduciary. There's things that we do as a board. We retain our independent thinking as an individual trustee. We retain our right to free speech. We act as a board. We do not act, we do not directly direct staff, whether it's indirectly or directly. One of the things we have to understand is we hold our one employee accountable. We have our constituents and the public that hold us accountable throughout our term and every four years. And it's incumbent on the chancellor to make sure that he holds his support and it's accountable. And if not, he's going to get an evaluation and we're going to say, hey, this isn't done right. We don't trust these numbers. What's going on over here? And it's up to him to do that and make sure that we trust the process, trust his employees or he will not be here. But we do not as a board, I don't think, create a long-term position. To do the work that we are charged to do in collaboration with our administrator, the one employee that we have. And so hopefully if we're saying that there's some, 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 some areas that we need to address, let's do that. But let's be specific. Let's be direct and make sure that it's temporary. And that we're not creating this process that in the history of all the boards across this country that through best practices. I haven't seen it where, where we take, we go from having one employee to having two employees. I do believe that we can have an, that an oversight. Person or a process that comes in for a specific reason, just as a board hires attorneys and different people to answer directly to us as a board. But we have to make sure we're focused on what our goal is and we understand what governance is and the accountability lies with us. The buck stops with us. And it's incumbent on us to build that trust with our administration however we can. But we also have to demand that our, our one employee is doing his job. To make sure he, he is instilling that trust in his employees. That there's no undermining our process. There's no undermining who we are as individuals. And I think we can do that. But we have to make sure that we're not skirting our authority and our responsibility. And I'm passionate about this because, you know, I've done this for a very long time on different boards. But I just want us to make sure that we understand what we're charged with and that we have to do this work. And if we focus on that collaboration piece, the accountability piece. And, and just ask our community, like I said, let us hold our employee accountable. You hold us accountable and we'll get there. That trust will happen, but we have to allow this opportunity for us to kind of forget the past. Remember what happened, but let that go and move forward, do a reset. And try to build on this trust. We have, when I look out, I, I mean, we have so many new faces. We have a lot of old faces, older faces that have been with the administration for, for a while that we remember. But at the same time, we're a team. And we have to remember that. But if we can't focus on each other, trust each other up and down that line. Then of course we're gonna falter. And that's all I have to say, I mean, I I don't, I don't wanna, I know it probably it's this, my conversations probably meant directly for us as trustees. But when we're talking about governance, I felt incumbent on us to just be able to. Talk about it and hopefully we can go a little bit deeper in that.
Thank you, trustee Oliver, you were next.
Yeah, thank you, so, um, I think what is. Um. Wh- what, what, what is being brought forward in this conversation? Is a dynamic. That, um. It's been around in my experience with this board for a very long time. Um, and. I'm trying to, I'm trying to pick my words carefully, um. What I believe is a a proper governance structure. Is, if you will, ruled by law, not ruled by individual men or women. And that's really what I'm talking about here. And, you know, we can, we can. Elaborate on trustee Patritas's cautious remarks about the past administration in Washington. But there were certain things that were not allowed to happen. That the former president would have done. Had there not been checks and balances in place. Through the courts and other measures. Um, we have to take the individual personalities out of this conversation. And talk about the structure. And I'll even quote our, our, our chancellor and he's. Talked to us about, you know, when he was college president at CSM and he put certain. Things in place and people said, why, why do that? You know, you're doing great, he said, you know, if I may quote. Chancellor Claire, cuz I wanna make the college president proof. In other words, it's not about an I right now doing a good job. Well, we expect everyone that we employ to be doing a great job. It's. Creating a set of rules and regulations and accountability measures that take out of that equation. The specific individual who may be in place at any given time. And the specific board that may be in place at any given time. Uh, yeah, we've spent a lot of time in closed session dealing with, uh. Problems that have come to our attention and many we, you know, were learning about that we didn't know about at the time. But part of why we're addressing those things. Is because there were no rules of the road, there were no guideposts, there were no, you know, um. Boundaries to to playing fields. And that's really what we're talking about is establishing boundaries, establishing clear rules. And, um, and and then, you know, holding folks accountable, so. Trust is absolutely vital, I think we have an excellent trust with our chancellor and with his team. Um. If that's all we do. We're not doing our job. And I hate to quote another former president, trust but verify. In other words, everything is built on trust, but then it's not just. We know that you're doing a great job now, do it as you see fit. That is not our governing board role in 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 my opinion. So what I'm. Suggesting here is that we establish procedures, policies. And accountability measures. That, you know, endure season after season after season, chancellor after chancellor, board after board. And that make it clear, you know, what what the rules are, what the accountability measures are. Um, you know, when we learned about the internal auditor position, I did some very quick research, this was. Fifteen, sixteen months ago, I identified over twenty community college districts in California that have an internal auditor. And I found others around the the country. And, you know, their roles are are all, they're, they're not unique or one's. Uh, definition of their role, but this is not in any way an unusual position. Uh, to have. And I think it's a healthy thing to have, so I I, 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 I don't. See this as we're cleaning house, I think trustee Petri is. Uh, stated it much better than 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 I can state it. It's not, for example, whistleblower, what, if anyone heard me say. Let's just open the doors wide open and have everybody, you know, whatever, inform on everybody. You know, bring complaints, uh, forward, go willy-nilly, just, you know, have anarchy. I didn't say that, I said, we need a whistleblower policy. Now that policy should be very well-defined and restrictive and and not just be open season. But I think we need to develop a policy, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about it's open season, we're cleaning house. I think we're trying to bridge the gap between. What I believe has been historically, we hire the chancellor. We let him go, he or she. We evaluate and, you know, yes, we do an evaluation once a year, but. We don't really do more than that to get to a place where. We are not micromanaging, but again, for me, cuz I tend to look at certain numbers and certain reports. And have doubts about them, I don't wanna be the one. Who's constantly raising those doubts at board meetings. But if there are questions to be addressed. I would like to have a mechanism to do that research and address them so that we're doing our job. Which is not to go in and micromanage, but making sure that. Programs are run well, we're benchmarking. We're looking at best practices, we're looking at, you know, I think for the most part, we're gonna get very good positive reports. But we're maybe getting fine-tuning. Here's where something can be done a little differently than the board reviews it and and decides, so I I. I I would like to see the internal audit, uh, position put on board agenda for action. It's been out there as a discussion item for sixteen months, if the votes aren't there, then, you know, so be it.
Uh, I think really, uh, uh, trustee Goodman, uh, said what I I think was saying as well that. Uh, doing these things that you said, let's develop policies, let's develop rules, let's do this. This is our job as a board. This is our responsibility to set the policy and to set the direction and to work with our administration to see that it is done. And if you say historically trustee Hallibur that this is not what has happened and that we had a chancellor or a. Uh, 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 people in the administration that just said, we said, okay, go ahead and do things and we evaluate them once a year or whatever. I don't know if that, that, that was the, if that was the old board, that's the old board, that is not this board. This board I see is completely different. We look at things, just the people on this board look at things differently. Accountability, transparency, collaboration. And doing all these things are, I think, the hallmark of the people that sit in these chairs right now, and I think that we are sending that message out. That that is what we expect and if people don't hear it, then it'll be very clear that they're not hearing it because their actions will not be. Consistent with our message and then we will know who they are and we will then have to deal with the situation. So I I I don't think we, we basically give up our responsibility to someone else to tell us. Who's doing what and who's and how they're doing it, trustee Goodman, I see you have your hand up.
No, I was just gonna say, yeah, to that point, you know. The past, it's not one, it was, again, it wasn't one person, it was a board that approved those actions, any action. Anything that we're in disagreement with, we have to look in the mirror as a board and say it's on us. At what point are we gonna quit passing the buck or quit trying to pass the buck? And say it's our responsibility to hold our one employee accountable. When we talk about the, um, other colleges and districts that have this position. Is it a position that answers to the board or is it a position that answers to the chancellor? And then so, I mean, that's something that's very critical in understanding, we have one employee. But we also have responsibility to ask those questions and when those questions aren't asked, yeah, it's on us. And yes, you, uh, and and I'm sorry, but if you have fifty questions. And you don't wanna be that person at the board meeting that asks fifty questions, we have to be. It's incumbent on us to ask those questions and it's incumbent on on our administration to either have the answers. To have anticipated the answers and to make sure that we get that so we can vote and make sure we're doing so in an informed manner. That's, I I mean, it's. I take this very seriously, I think our responsibility is something we do not give away. And we have to understand that, we have to make sure we're held accountable. For our actions and our inactions. As a board, and if that means making sure we get the data, if that means slowing things down. If that means saying, hey, we need to hire an independent auditor that answers to our chancellor that in turn answers to us. That gets us to where we need to be, that's what we have to do. We've seen that in the last go-around with smack that we're slowing the process down. It's incumbent on us to make sure we get to where we wanna be, that we can look in the mirror, that we can look to our constituents and say, we were good stewards. And we can't give that away. And I respectfully disagree that we put this item on the agenda unless we understand. And that we're comparing apples to apples and understanding that, yes, these other positions were at these other districts or colleges. But they answer to a chancellor, they do not answer directly to a board and if so, that is done so on a specific and very narrow, um, scope.
Yes, trustee Oliver.
So, uh, Maurice, uh, I I I. Have. Only great positive respect for you and and really. Uh, appreciate the role that you've played here with. You know, bringing a lot of stuff forward, a lot of stuff to the surface. I think the problem I have is, I agree with you, it is on us, I've heard you say this many times. The question is, what does that really mean? So. I think what it means for me. Because we report to the people. And we are expecting. Complete, full. Data, uh, analysis, objectivity and so forth from. Our administration, that's what we expect, I would hope. That when our administration is evaluating programs and let's just say international ed, I'm just thinking of that as one program. Um. Or our contracting practices is another, you know, that they would have have the wherewithal to say, you know, let's, let's. Bring somebody on board to advise us, see how we're doing, see how others do it, do it, see. You know, how we could do it better, okay? Um. I would expect that, that's part of an excellent organization. Separate and apart from that, that's something the board should do. So, yes, ask questions, uh, yes, get data. Uh, but also verify. So that's really, I think, a philosophical point of disagreement, maybe, maybe not. Um, and, you know, I don't wanna unearth stuff here. But, um, I've been un-un-satisfied with reports that we've received even recently. Um, that I think if a neutral brought in by the board, reporting the board and not having, you know, their. Their reports reviewed and then rewritten, uh, or altered, uh, before it came to the board. Um, I feel maybe a little differently, but I don't, I I simply don't. And again, I'm not, I'm not here on a witch hunt or anything. Uh, I just think that we need. To. Turn it, it's on us into something more than we trust or we just ask them. Lots and lots of questions. When we would be enhanced, our role is leaders would be enhanced by also getting data. Uh, from, from other sources. Um, external, internal auditor positions vary from district to district. And many of them are dual reports to the board and the chancellor. I mean, we can look at that structure, but this is not in any way an anomaly. Uh, I think it's a best practice.
Can I ask a question, uh, because realistically, we're talking about having someone that would report to us. And give us, uh, an audit and of how things are going. And realistically, that person should be our chancellor. That's the person that we hired that works for us, that is supposed to carry the water for us. If we had not hired Chancellor Claire and we hired someone from outside the district that we don't know and doesn't know us. Would we be still saying that we need to have someone that's going to be looking over the chancellor's shoulder as well? To report directly to us rather than to the chancellor? I don't think so, because that would be a fresh set of eyes and that would be the person that would be doing it. I think the chancellor is the person that knows what we expect of him and what we expect of the district. If we're talking about contracting. If we need to look at how we do it, what our procedures are in our practices. Then we as board members say, this is an area that we need to look at and take a deep dive in and. Show us what the process is, what are the matrices that are looked at? What is the procedure, what are the, what are the, the methods that we follow, so it goes step by step and we know what they are and then. We basically make sure that they are followed and how do we make sure that they're followed? The chancellor, the ultimate recommendation that comes to us, comes through the, through the administration. And the buck stops at his desk before it stops on our desk. And if it doesn't come outright because the chancellor is not doing his job correctly or is not following the direction that we give. Then that's when we get a new chancellor. And so I don't think we get someone that's gonna be looking over his shoulder to tell us that he's not doing his job. Or that the administrators are not doing their job or that it should be done differently at different levels. This is again, our responsibility to take them one department at a time, one area that we think needs to be looked at. And we look at it and we figure it out. And I don't know that there's, there, there's a need for experts to tell us some of these things that are probably common sense. Uh, and so before I bring in somebody else, I wanna make sure that we try and do it ourselves and we. And we basically don't, uh, basically pass our responsibility off. To somebody else to do it for us as trustee Goodman has articulated. Trusty Goodman?
Hey, John has his hand up, or is that from earlier?
John, are you looking to get in?
Maybe not. Thank you, Maurice. Uh, I I just, I guess I wanna clarify my point of view on this, uh, cuz it sounds like the discussion amongst the board members has gone to. Uh. Two different extremes on a, on a spectrum of of what we're talking about. Uh, so I wanna clarify where where I stand on that spectrum. Personally, I I start from a position of trust, I'm the new guy here. Uh, I, what I see on our team is absolutely an A-team set of A-team players. Who are, uh, at the top of their game, I I have no question about anybody on this executive team in terms of their. Commitment, their intentions and even their capabilities. So, just so everybody understands my perspective, I don't think this is. Anywhere near Thomas you were characterizing it as, uh, looking over shoulders or clearing, uh, 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 clearing out the. The table at all. Um, and if, and if that's, uh, if that's how this position is gonna be used, then I would be much less supportive of. Uh, of, of having such a position. Rather, um, uh, well, in addition to Maurice's point. Um, I absolutely believe that the authority exists with the board. Uh, the buck does stop with the board. And I don't think, uh, a position or a role or a function like this is by any means an abdication of our authority. Um, it might be an abdication of some, or I should say, an assignation of some responsibility. And trying to get some additional information, but that in information simply informs us as board members. Uh, to make a decision and so. To the, to the point of having a few different perspectives and making a decision, it helps us make better decisions. I've, I have no problem with that at all, but I hope that the staff doesn't see that as, um, undermining or or second guessing in any way. Uh, I, I guess I have this perspective from my background. At a, at a formative part of my professional career, I worked in the consulting industry. And and in that role, um, learned how to use, uh, the consultative process, drawing from outside experts. And in, in, in particular, iteration. And in, in, in particular iteration, uh, to move towards, uh, the correct answer. And, and sometimes in that iterative process, you, you make a mistake and, and. I'm not sure who, who talked about this as a permanent position, but you know, that it doesn't need to be a permanent position. If the person. Uh, uh, comes in for a, a quick hit or a, a series of, of investigations that we look at. Investigations even sounds like the wrong word. Assignments and studies that we ask them to do, great. And if we're done with them at the end of that process, that's great too. Um, so I think we can address that issue and how we structure it. Whether the, there is a dotted line to the chancellor or a direct line to the board, you know, I, I personally think that. Um, having some, uh, uh, resource that the board can draw upon directly is useful in the same way that we hire lawyers. Uh, or consultants for some of our specific issues that we deal with in, in closed session. So. You know, I guess I, I would like to make sure that, that this doesn't turn into a, a, a. Misconstrued effort to second guess the A-team that we have on the field. And the, and the game that we're all playing together. I mean, I, you know, building on your football analogy, we are absolutely. Uh, working, we've worked our way through the playoffs. We had a little bit of reorganization recently. And, uh, and we're right here performing at the top of our game. So, you know, I, I guess I for one. And I'm just one of five, uh, would love to have more resources and better information to help us inform our responsibilities. So that we can execute our responsibility, as you point out Maurice, to the public. You know, most effectively. But by no means does that mean anybody's looking over anybody's shoulder or trying to clean any houses. I, I think we're just trying to. Make good decisions. So, uh, I think it's worthwhile to look at the precedent. If, if Richard knows of 20 other campuses where this or districts where this is in place, let's. I'm okay taking a little bit of time and looking at those. What I'm, what I'm not okay with is. Discussing it, talking about it, putting it often till next board meeting and next board meeting and next board meeting. If we're going to do something, let's do it. If we're not going to do something, let's not do it. And, and let's, you know, not, let's, let's keep the, uh, locker room culture that I think Mike has built here. Uh, that our team is all pulling in the same direction. Maybe locker room culture is the wrong reference, but. Team culture, uh, that we built here and that we're moving towards, uh, going in the right direction because I, I sure get a sense that. In the mix of, uh, the old faces who have the expertise and institutional knowledge. And, uh, even accumulated scar tissue from previous iterations of trying to do things well. Combined with some of the new faces that we have, uh, with new experiences and new, uh, perspectives. I think we're getting ready to do some really interesting stuff. And, uh, if the, if the internal auditor. Phraseology or job description needs to be, you know, addressed differently. So that we can all see this person as another member of our per, person or team or division. I don't know. They're, they're a member of our team to help us make better decisions. Let's do it. If, if there isn't support for that, or if it feels like it's going to completely undermine our culture because. Any of us are being afraid of being held accountable or having other sources of information that we draw upon. You know, that's, that gets back to the cultural issues that many have referenced on this discussion is to. Uh, you know, hey, how do we, how do we serve the truth and serve the public and get to the best, to the best decision-making process we can? So. Uh, I'm quite open to this idea. What I, what I was trying to get at in my opening comment was. Uh, that we just shouldn't keep deferring and discussing and considering it. If, if we want to figure it out, which I do, let's figure out how to make it work so that it's a. Additive part of the team, not a, not a, a culturally destructive part of the team. Like the Internal Affairs Department at a police station, right? Let's, uh, let's do it to, to make our team better. Thanks.
So, so I, I, I agree with what you're saying to a certain point, but. Uh, and don't get me wrong. I'm not suggesting that we are going to get someone to look over people's shoulder. The perception that who we get to look into things by administration and staff is going to be. That these people are here to look over my shoulder and then to report out, you know, and that I think is something that. It's not me that's creating that. I think that that will be how it will be perceived. And I'm not looking at cleaning house either. And if we're saying that we've got the A-team here, then let's work with the A-team. We don't need someone else to tell us that we've got the A-team. And the other thing that's important is if we need to bring someone in to look at something specific. Then we need to do the needs assessment first and find out what are our needs, what are the specific areas? That we need to have looked at. Can we look at them ourselves as a board in-house? Can we look at what other people are doing and compare it to what we're doing? Can we do it with our own people collaboratively because they are our A-team? And take care of it ourselves, or, or do we just bring someone in that looks at just everything in general? I mean, it's like you're putting the cart before the horse. We're going to get someone on board right now, but we haven't identified the areas that we specifically. Feel we have to have looked at. So let's, let's do that step first. Let's find out what do we need to have looked at? What is the nature of the issues that are, have to be, uh, reviewed? Can we review them? We haven't even looked at them ourselves. No one has given us a report on saying, this is how we do our contracts and this is the, the way that it is. Okay? Can't we look at those? I know I can look at them. I can see, I mean, we're all, we're all people that have, have experience in this world. If you show me what we're doing and if it doesn't look right to me, or look right to you or anyone else that, that is going to be looking at it from a board standpoint. We should be able to identify some of these things. And I think that these are things that we might be able to do ourselves. And if we then find out that it's beyond our skill set and we need someone else to look at it. Fine, let's bring it in. And at that point, we've already identified it. We've brought it to the table. Staff knows we're looking at this and there is a problem here and we can't find out what the answer is. So we're bringing someone else in. Someone is coming in to identify and work with the problem. And so no one should have a problem with that because. It's been identified as a problem. And if it's a problem and it's something that they're not doing right. Then you know what? It, it, it's, it's the effect of the cause. But I, I, I just have a problem of hiring somebody straight up and, and just coming in and basically looking at the district. And especially if they go over the chancellor's head.
Well, Tom, to your point, um, thank you. I, 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 uh. Sorry, if I can just respond to your point. Did write up a memo and I should. Sorry, am I unmuted?
No, no, you're good. We hear you.
Um, you know, to your point, I actually put together a memo. I don't know how long ago it was, four or five weeks ago that I sent around to the board that actually. Laid out specifically some of the things that I was hoping this, uh, this role could look into. Richard just laid out, uh, a half a dozen other things. I mean, I think the, um. You know, your, your, your point's well taken. Maybe we ought to put together a work plan. Uh, and, and scope the areas of study that we might want to use this resource for. Um, I'd ask you to please have a look at the memo I sent a while back. I can resend it if you need it. And, uh, Richard, maybe you can add to that some of the ideas that you discussed and. Let's talk about that at the next, at the next meeting and figure out if those are priorities that the board wants to spend time on or not.
Richard. So I, I'm frustrated just because. This issue has been discussed. It first came up 16 months ago. Uh, it has been discussed in terms of staffing, structure, restructuring and on and on. And we're still kind of like at the point of saying, well. We don't even know if we need it. I, I have no doubt we absolutely need it. And I believe we've got to take the personalities out of this discussion. This is about coming up with a structure that is accountable. And unless the California law changed. So that all five of us became full-time employees of this district. Which I don't think would be healthy. Let me start by saying that. We don't have the time. We don't have the expertise. We don't have the access to information. To do the things I think certain trustees are assuming we just do as a matter of course. We don't know what we don't know. I'm being restrained here because I, I'm, I'm trying not to bring onto a public discussion. Many of the things that have come to our knowledge. That we just never would have thought. To ask questions about because they were hidden from our view. Um, but which get to what are the right practices? What are the right policies? If these policies are not in place, if the rules of the road are not in place, then it opens. The potential, and I'm not saying any of this is current day, please keep this in mind. For lots of things to occur that, you know, we're, there's a reason we're spending so many hours in closed session. With attorneys. So John provided a very lengthy list. Um, and those were all valid items for an audit, internal auditor. Uh, there would be ongoing job responsibilities for this function. Um, there is plenty to be done. There's plenty of work to be done. I would suggest that maybe. You know, uh, subcommittee of the board work with staff to flesh out a, a job description to bring back to the board. And you know, that's point one and point two, which I think maybe we can bring back on the table. Is the board employing, uh, as need, as a need arises. Um, external experts to report to us. On specific larger scope. So it's not just part of someone's daily work. We want to do a review of. Best practices in contracting, for example, benchmarking against other districts. You know, that, that could be, uh, uh, we, we hire an entity and they. You know, have a.
You have to be in charge a second. I need to take this call. I'm very sorry.
Uh, no problem. Um, okay. You know, that, that we bring them on specifically to do an in-depth research report. And when that report's done, they report to us. And, you know, we, we hear various points of view, including, you know. As with our regular financial audits, a response from the administration, then we. Then it, no one's telling the board, do this or do that. It's then up to us to decide what's the best policy. I'll, I'll just, uh, open it back up. I, I don't know if I can see hands. If anybody has their.
I have a, yeah, I got my hand up.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I guess for me now, I mean, this is a slippery slope that I, I'm afraid of. I mean, I'm all for. And I do believe that it is timely that we review this and have an individual come in on a limited, with a limited scope. But now we're talking about other individuals, uh, taking on additional areas. Are we saying, hey, the board needs a cabinet now to counter, uh, administrations cabinet? I mean, that's, it's almost like we're saying, okay, we want someone to have the responsibility. To do the work the board should entrust administration to do. The accountability piece, getting the data and getting the information is all good. And we need that. Uh, when you brought this up, like you said, 16 months or so ago, I was all for it. But I just want to make sure again that it's a limited scope and it's temporary. We are, I don't want this board to be pushed into an absentee trusteeship where we have individuals doing our job. I want to trust the process. I want to trust our administration. Um, one of the things I do not, um. Feel concerned with is, um, our, our administration having, um, issues with people looking over their shoulder or helping them. Cause we have professionals. Uh, they have been professional and I do trust that that's going to continue to be the case. If someone's coming in and saying, hey, we're here to help. Make your program or your department run smoother and enhance it. They're going to welcome that. But just this notion that we believe that there's something intentionally hidden that we can't get to, I'm sure it'll be something. If that's the case. It'll still be intentionally hidden to whomever we bring in, if that's the case. So we have to make sure that we're setting our, our employees up for success. Not playing gotcha or anything like that. But like I said, make sure that our administrators have the support. To do the work that we expect of them. If this, uh, executive vice chancellor's position does a lot of this work and, 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 and houses some of the work that we're talking about. Then so be it. But we should be talking about that. I'm not going to take an administration that I believe at times can be top-heavy. And, and making sure that, hey, we're going to add one or two or three more salaries to this and taking away dollars that should be going directly to our students. And so if we can do that, working more efficiently, let's do that. Let's make sure we're asking the chancellor, hey chancellor. Do you believe that adding this individual to your, to having this role fit? And somehow these duties be welcome inside someone else's, uh, roles, whether executive vice chancellor, someone else's. Could that benefit you? Or would it make sense for us to do this intentionally and have a short-term goal? For someone to come and evaluate certain programs. And to give the board a snapshot as to where we are to provide direction, not just to the board, but to you as a chancellor. Have we asked that question? Have we asked and given and empowered our chancellor to be a part of this process to communicate to us what should work collaboratively? We can't preach collaboration if we're not doing it. And so that's all I'm saying. I'm all for it. I'm all for us saying, let's do this on a limited scope. That's all I'm saying. I do not want this to be a long-term. Thing. I do not want this to take away dollars from our students. I do not want us to take away, want this to take away from the collaboration that we're building. With this new administration.
Can I, can I, um, jump, jump in real?
Yes, go ahead.
So, so trustee Goodman, thank you. So, you know, as I listen to this and, and first of all, I want to state, and you've, you've all been so great. You've said this before. There's nothing personal here, you know, um, and I, I truly believe that I wouldn't be sitting in this seat if, you know, I know that the board, you know, they wouldn't have hired me. So I, I don't take any of this personally. I also, um, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, trustee Oliver saying, you know, using my term. You know, chancellor proof and president proof. And so, uh, trustee Oliver, I agree with, with your statement. I, I want to be there too. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to, you know, as I in, talk to individual trustees about, um, agenda items. And this was one that trustee Oliver, um, uh, really wanted to see. Richard, if it's okay, I want to tell you, I thought we had a great conversation, um, you know, this, just this last week. And, and as I hear this conversation, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's a bit, it mirrors a bit of the conversation we had. Which is, I think we all know where we want to be at the end. I mean, I, I don't think there's any, any disagreement about where we want to be at the end. It's. Where we're getting tripped up is, well, how do you get there? Right? And so, uh, you know, whether we have an internal auditor, how you start, that's your decision as a board. Um, I will definitely give you my opinion if you want. One of the outcomes, I think regardless, whether you decide to hire an internal auditor or you decide to, you know. Use people as needed. I would like the board to consider and a s, a sub. A board subcommittee that is an audit subcommittee, not an audit subcommittee from the traditional standpoint of just the financial auditors. But really, whether you have an internal auditor or not, I think there is, that's where this collaboration and this partnership comes. Where you get a subcommittee and, and, and you get together with the administration and say, hey, this is an area we really need to probe. That's one thing that I, I want to offer to you, um, to consider regardless of your ultimately just ultimate decision on an internal auditor or not. The other thing I want to, uh, two other things, then I'll, I, I, I know trustee Petriti, you had your hand up. I, I cheated a little bit and I texted Tom ahead of time and said, can I talk next? So. There's, there's responsibility on us too. I recognize we have had a rough year. Um, there's just been so many things coming at us so quickly. I, I think we break, broke the record for number of board meetings. But one of the things that I want to enact, and I've asked my staff to do this. We want to give you a six-month look ahead in terms of board items, board issues, things that are going to go on the agenda. So that gives us a nice long on-ramp that if you see something that's potentially, oh boy, this is going to cause some trouble. We can start to, you know, without obviously violating the Brown Act, but it gives you, you don't have from, you know. Friday night to Wednesday to figure out, you know, where we are in a particular issue that's rough. So that's something that's going to come. And then finally, I think where there is areas that require a deeper probe, where there's a lot of board, um, concern. I know that's, that you're not your full-time jobs and you all put a lot of time in it and I respect the time you put in. But actually welcome here and there, you know, opportunities where if we're redesigning a process or a system, if there's a board subcommittee and, and, and. You know, it, it helps to understand the process a little bit better. Um, I'm all for it. We're doing that frankly with the, uh, the RFP process. We have a board subcommittee of trustee, um, Goodman and trustee Oliver and, and you, and we get the benefit. We're kind. And we get the benefit. We're kind of designing this thing in a way, but we're getting the benefit of an outside expert doing exactly what I think you you hope for. Which is to say, what are the best practices? And and it kind of opens up that that, um, that black box, if you will. So. Those are the three, three things I wanted to state, but regardless of how you go, uh, how you structure this. I would recommend you consider some sort of audit subcommittee of the board that would give you some. Some sense of, you know, what it is you would like the, like us to to really probe a bit. So I'll stop there.
Uh, trustee Petritis, you're next.
Yeah, um. And thank you, Mike. I'm just trying to, I I don't want to repeat everything that everybody has said already. Um, I I've been critical of of our board meetings where everybody has to repeat what everybody says and then therefore they end up being five hours long. So in that spirit. I want to say that, you know, when I, when I heard trustee Holliver's and we certainly talked about this, you know. Talking about neutral experts for the purpose of, you know, benchmarking expertise, like things that inform our process. And and the decisions that we make and. The 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 part of this conversation has developed into a debate of. Whether a neutral expert is somebody who's cleaning house or somebody who's looking over shoulders. I'm just really having a problem. Uh, trying to reconcile that. And 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 maybe it is just about, as trustee Goodman said, if the issue is just simply. How we're defining these things and we need to use different words and. And 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 map that out. And I don't know that this is the meeting to do that if, or that's, I I don't think it is. But maybe we want to start coming up with exactly what those, you know, what those words are and what's the term, but. I i- it. You know, trustee Pimentel, you 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 said, well, there's two extremes. They feel to me like they're not just extremes, they're they're completely different concepts of of what it is that we're trying to do here. So I would love to learn more about the other districts that are using internal auditors and what that looks like, like that seems. That would be extraordinary valuable to me to be able to understand that because I'm sure there's even good practices about how that works. And I'm sure these questions that we're raising. Uh, trustee Goodman and just in president there is that they're 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 probably common questions, right? That people don't want to feel like they're not trusted or that you're trying to clean house or look over their shoulders. Those, those three things are so far from. What I'm thinking it is that we need and what I'm sensing and seeing that we need, uh, having just been on the board for the last couple of months.
Well, here we are. And I, and a very, a very good discussion. I I'm so glad that we've all felt comfortable enough to lay out our thoughts. John?
Yeah, may I ask a question, Tom? On this, on this point of perception, can I ask for a a comment from the three presidents as to how? How this might feel for them? Could this be a resource that would be useful to to the board, to the college presidents? Or would this feel like another, uh, oversight, uh, uh, looking over their shoulder?
Well.
Do it in a way that's additive and constructive rather than destructive to the culture.
And since you're an interim, Kim.
I'm interim. I have the least, I have the least to to lose in answering this question. So I feel like I might be in the best. Position, um, honestly, to to just give you my, just my gut honest feeling. So. First of all, I've never worked in a district that's hired an internal auditor position to report directly to the board. Um, so. I know others probably have on the call and can speak more to what that actually. It was an experience in terms of a leadership role. But I guess how I'm honestly feeling is I would love to be the person. That tells you, you know, that goes out and finds the best practices, that brings you things that that benchmarks it. And if I don't have the bandwidth to do that, then I would feel it's my responsibility to, um, work with the district staff or hire someone. Another, um, you know, person from, I'm, I was just thinking of all kinds of different, um. Groups I could go to throughout the California community colleges where they have actually put together peer review committees that could come in. And look at best practices from things from EOPS programs all the way to. Um, guided pathways, so many diff- I mean, this is of course in my college world, right? So these are the things that I would bring in. And want to know about best practices. And I just feel like that's my job. That's my role. I I want that relationship with you. I want that relationship with the chancellor. I don't want to give it to someone else. Just being honest with you, I'm excited. I would be excited, um, to dig deep into these issues and share with you. What I, what I see is going on and how I think we can get better. And I would be so open to entertain any. Um, you know, any of your opinions or pushback or however, you know. It could be interpreted, but I just see that as my job and I want to do it. I want to be the best at it. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Melissa, you're unmuted.
I know my, um, dog is about to bark, so.
It's okay. Mine is sleeping on the floor here.
Kim, to your point, there's, there's no wrong answer. I mean, don't feel like this is, uh, thin ice or any, I I literally, I think it's very useful to get. Your guys' feedback.
Yep, so I, you know, um. I basically came in as a new president, uh, on a foundation of transparency. I've done so much in the last six months. To improve. Um, you know, the openness and the transparency with everything we do, including our college governance council, which seemed like it was. A secret society or something. And so now, you know, I've opened things wide open at Skyline College. And I do think. You know, I come from a district. Let me just say this, I feel like this, this district outperforms. Um, many other districts. Let's just put it that way. And I feel so excited to be part of this district. And to have the resources that we have, you know, so I come from a. A deficit district and 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 so this just feels really good to be part of this team and I have never seen. Such, um, incredible talent that we have at the district office that I have at Skyline and across other two campuses. So I just want to. Preface what I'm about to say with that because it's just an incredible organization. And I'm a little concerned because, you know, all of the colleges are part of accrediting. We're accredited bodies and there is this. Little accreditation place, it's. Um, standard four. Standard four C twelve and and it regulates. Um, sort of this relationship that the board has with the CEO. So I'm a little concerned about the wording there because. This, you know, if you have anybody reporting directly to you, it feels a little bit like interference. They they use the word interference in that accreditation. So I'd be a little bit concerned about that. Um, but having said that. Like I said earlier, I am all for whatever it takes to get us to this place where. We are moving as as a un- unified, you know, team that engages. Uh, trust with our community, um, our larger community. So whatever we decide that moves us in that direction, I'm all for that. So, thank you.
President Moore.
Um, thank you. Uh, thank you, Kim and Melissa, for your comments. I think they were spot on. Um, I, like Melissa, have come from other districts and and Kim as well, where it's probably been done differently. I feel really fortunate to work in this district because I believe that it's running really, really well. Um, and. My experience has been that we need to continue to work towards lines of open communication and transparency. We've been working really, really hard on that. Uh, and I think that we need to continue to move in that direction. Um, and I'm all for. Opportunities in which to continue to build trust. I will share with you from my previous experience in other districts in Southern California. Uh, specifically in Compton, where I did a lot of work on accreditation. Having a an outside, uh, auditor that did not report to a chancellor created a lot of problems and did end up affecting. The accreditation status. Uh, when an auditor comes in, staff will immediately lose a level of trust because it is viewed as somebody else looking over. Their shoulder. So unless the lines of reporting and communication are very, very clear. It, um. It will and can be seen as taking away a additional layer of responsibility from the board of trustees. I can also say that. You also have to deal with another layer of people who make complaints and now are making complaints to an auditor, asking for additional. Review. So it really will require very clear and concise direction. Otherwise, whoever comes in, whether it's short-term or long-term, can spend a lot of time and resources. And taking away from programs and as trustee Goodman has indicated, from resources that really should be going toward students. Um, unless it's a clear directive from the board, um, moving in other directions. So I'm not saying that it it should not be done. I just think it has to be clearly laid out. And I think it needs to be done in a manner that is viewed as continuing to build trust among staff, all staff. Um, those, those are my comments.
Uh, thank you, trustee Pimentel, first of all, for asking for the input and and ladies, thank you for sharing, uh, your opinions. Uh, you're out there and and you're key components to what we do here at this district. And I, your, your, your insight is valuable. Trustee Oliver.
So, uh, first, I I think the question that has been raised and I've discussed it, uh, separately with, uh. Chancellor Claire. Uh, accreditation is something we have to be sensitive about, but we also have to. Uh, um, I believe get a, uh, legal opinion. To make sure that, uh, it's not just raised to inhibit the board. Uh, it's, it's, this has happened in the past, uh, accreditation, you know, is a boogeyman to keep us from. From doing certain things. So, uh, let's be careful about that. I'm not, I'm not. I I have no conclusion on that. Uh, I think we need to be careful about it and. And and, you know, get, um, independent legal opinion on on that. Um, but I I feel like we've, you know, it's been a great discussion. I appreciate every, everyone's input. I think. There are a couple of points that. Maybe, maybe some level which there's a certain philosophical disagreement and, you know, that's life. I mean, that's the way it is. Um, but I would like to move forward on this. Um, and. Um, maybe I'll throw out as a suggestion. That, um. Subcommittee of the board work with chancellor and whoever he designates to try to develop, um. A, a, a set of duties, a, a position, job position, set of duties. Looking at, uh, you know, other districts that have these positions that clearly have not caused, uh. Chaos or havoc or suspicion or everyone worried about, you know, who's looking over their shoulder. That's what I would suggest we do.
Um, all right. Um, what my suggestion, uh, go ahead, trustee Pimentel.
And let's do this in a very transparent way. So there there aren't any. Uh, you know, conversations on the side. So it's so the, what what we find out is transparent, the conversations about that are transparent. You know, let's, that, again, this is about setting the bar to do that.
Uh, my thought then goes back to the concept of, uh, the needs assessment first. Before we decide that we need to bring someone in to look at things. I think we need to find out what it is that needs to be looked at. Because unless we know what we want to have looked at, maybe. We can find that these are things that we can deal with in-house. If it's not. And it looks as if we have a number of items, areas that do need specific attention that we don't feel. We can deal with on our own, then we take the next step and talk about bringing somebody else in. But that's why I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We need to identify areas. Instead of just bringing someone on board and then saying, well, let's find things for you to do right now. I don't know that we've identified the areas that we actually need someone from the outside to look at. And so I'd like to do that part first and have the subcommittee if you, if you want to do that. I think that's a great idea to have a subcommittee of the board. And the chancellor and, uh, other people who need to be on that. To basically identify what are the needs. We do the needs assessment.
I I'd be happy to help on the subcommittee, uh, with the one condition that whatever. Uh, whatever we find is transparent and a second condition that the, the goal of our work is to, is to be additive and not destructive to the culture that we're building here. So, um, if, if, uh, if the board would have me help Richard with those two caveats, I'd be happy to, to help out on this subcommittee.
Uh, Richard, are you, are you interested in being on this subcommittee?
Absolutely.
Well, I I didn't want to just assign you to something, you know, then you say, oh, hell, I didn't want to be on that. Okay, well, um, then, um, uh, it's, we have a subcommittee. Now we have to basically decide. What is the subcommittee going to do? Is it going to do the needs assessment first or is it not?
Um, how about if we, how about if the subcommittee produces the needs assessment for discussion at the next board meeting? And then, uh, depending on how that discussion goes, we can figure out what our next step is.
I'm good with that. Uh, any other board members, uh, feel like they want to comment on that process?
Um, I'm interested, is there, I'm, can a subcommittee only have two board members because of the Brown Act? I think, I think so, but, uh.
Yeah.
Certainly interested in commenting on these things.
Well, i- i- it would have to be a public meeting if there are three. That's an option too, I guess, but just more meetings.
Well, uh, I guess Lisa, my suggestion would be if if you would trust us to at least take a first cut at a. At a needs assessment. I think that's a fair, a good step, Tom.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, we can send that, uh, that needs assessment or at least our perception of the needs assessment around. Uh, this would be with input from Mike and the presidents as well. Uh, we'd send it around before the next board meeting. Maybe that's even, uh, part of the agenda item.
Probably what would happen is, is, uh, in order to make sure we're within Brown Act. Uh, the chancellor will make a report out. Uh, I I think that is probably. The better process. Uh, can anyone help me with that? Does that sound like the better process? And if you're unable to resolve that by. The next meeting, then let us know if you need more time or needs a deeper dive.
Yeah, president nurse, I would presume and that, um, that if it's agreed that there's a needs assessment, that would be the document. The public document that would be shared at the next board meeting for for comment.
All right, and you can, yes, and you can add people to this, uh, committee chancellor. Uh, if you feel you want to bring other staff on board as well that can share their expertise and knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, and I know there's a, I I, well, never mind. We need an executive vice chancellor and I, and you know, we're just going to have to get this work done. We're, we're still in the hiring process. I want to hold the work up. So let's just go forward. We can do it, but, uh, getting that EVC is going to be critical to this process as well. Um, and I think that's going to help.
Yes, trustee Petritis.
This is just a little input and and, yeah, I'm fine with not being on the subcommittee, but you know, I was doing a little Googling about, um. About other colleges and what, you know, internal auditors do to support boards and often. That's, I'm just raising this as just my, that's, you know, I guess, Richard and John, I'm kind of offering this to you as we do this needs assessment. You know, often they're, they're not things that have to do with like the running of campus. Uh, you know, college-based activities. They're often much more around issues like. You know, how are bookstores handled? I know there's bookstores on campuses, but bookstores handled or how are the CARE Act funds? Being handled or what is a accounts payable process look like? Like they're, they're, they tend to be, I don't know if I want to call those district-wide. But they they tend to be sort of of that nature and not, not things like, are are your hiring practices for faculty or? The development of programs or how you're assessing programs or, you know, it, anyway, I just think that they, I just wanted to state that because we were sort of getting into the. Kind of the more of the college running and I think in some ways they're, they're big. And I think in some ways they're they're bigger, they're they're a little bit more sort of of a district focus on those kinds of policies. So I offer that to the two of you on the on the subcommittee to say that that is also where I think these things are needed on that kind of level.
Trusty Goodman, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, when we have the subcommittee and as we move forward with conversations with staff. Understand that we have to create a create environments where staff feels trusted as well. And we create opportunities for them to be as candid as possible. Trust goes both ways. Listening to the presidents, I don't want to, you know, assume, but I I just feel that their ability to be candid. You know, is it's it's not there. To be able to just say flat out, this is how I feel. Just make sure as we go through this process, we're creating an environment for them to be forthright and candid as possible as we move forward.
I echo that sentiment. Thank you, trustee Goodman. All right, well, I I guess that kind of sums up where we are on this item and I appreciate everyone's input on it. And it did bring us up to eleven fifty eight, which is twelve o'clock. This is our cutoff point for this particular item. We need to decide if we're going to take a break at this point, and I think we have scheduled. A half hour in case anyone needs to stop and have some lunch, so we don't. Don't go through without having some sustenance there since it's not being brought into us. If everyone is on board, then we will reconvene sharply at twelve thirty. Is that good? Okay, thank you.
One, two, three, four. All right. I'm sorry. What was that? Okay. Okay, it looks like we are all back. One, two, three, four. Trustee Oliver, there you are. Great. Are we ready to proceed? Okay. And thank you everyone for pretty much keeping on target. I think we're going to just continue to do that through the rest of this meeting and be able to complete when we are supposed to. Our next area of discussion is discussion of the data as it pertains to student achievement and discussion of transformative curriculum. These two items are kind of being taken together because they seem to flow one into the other. And so we are ready to begin that discussion. Who would like to kick it off? Trustee Chancellor, would you like to get us started?
Yeah, I haven't really added much to these conversations. But yes, I want to thank trustee Patrizes for meeting with Aaron McBean and I and the three college presidents just to have a kind of a pre-conversation. And we did feel like the items were related. We've allocated a full hour though, however, so I think this is just going to be a conversation that flows. And trustee Patrizes, I don't know if you want to, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but again, I see this as a board discussion. We do have vice chancellor McBean and the three presidents as well, and we're just happy to round out the discussion among the board members unless, Aaron, you had anything else that you'd like to add before we get started. No? Okay.
So I'll, I can start just a little bit about our conversation around the use of data. I do, I'm getting a little echo, is anybody, it stopped. Okay. I have some more to say specifically around open educational resources and transforming curriculum. But maybe can, I'd like to just, I'd like to first just start to talk about data and then maybe, maybe halfway into our time, start, start there. And then there'll definitely be some overlaps. I guess I just want to kind of just start with kind of an invocation of sorts, which is to say that, you know, there's a lot of great data that the district and the colleges are using, gathering, monitoring, making decisions based on, et cetera. So there's like really good practice in place. That's kind of what I gathered from when, as we were talking earlier in the week. And I guess my question was really about, you know, what are, so two things, you know, do we have a culture or how can we help, you know, from a policy perspective of thinking about a culture of using data? And I made the distinction of it not being data for decision-making, right? It's not that you go look for data to make a decision, it's that you have an issue or something you want to address. And then you look at what is that data and information that you could be using to actually solve that, solve that issue, not unlike the conversation we just were having, right? How do you get more informed? How do you make decisions? But the piece that I'm very interested in specifically, I think as we work on these processes overall in the district are, are that continuous improvement piece. And, you know, how for continuous learning purposes, not just data for compliance. I think, and Aaron, you can certainly speak to this, I think when it comes to, you know, state reports and things that we have to do, we're, you know, at the head, we're at the top of our game there. And I think, you know, just sort of opening the conversation about what are those ways in which we could be not only embedding these practices into everybody's workflow, right? That's not just administrators, but faculty, program heads, et cetera. Also talking about the transparency of data. And I'm really interested around student access to data. You know, much like is, like when you go, you know, there's been the issue in the medical profession when the doctors kind of in the olden days didn't want to give you your, you know, all your results and things, and you're like, wait a minute, this is my body, you just extracted something from, why can't I, why can't I see that? Similar, I think that students have often, you know, not understood how data is being made to make decisions about their pathways that we are encouraging them or suggesting or telling them to take. You know, a student might end up in some special program for first generation students studying science, but they might not understand how they got there or because they've come from a identified underrepresented group that therefore encourages them. And so you just sort of end up there and like, oh, I'm here, but they don't know why. And there is some interesting research that has showed that students also want to understand why we as, you know, you as, you know, educational professionals are making the decisions that we're making about them. So anyway, there's a very interesting, I think, piece about student access to data as well. So those are some of the kind of the high, you know, the high level issues I'd love for all of you who are at that call to sort of jump in as well. I know this is, I would love for you to jump in to sort of give some more context. I know this is a conversation also that we want to, the whole board to be engaged in and thinking about data use. But that was sort of the context of that conversation.
Aaron?
Sure. Thanks, Tom, and thank you trustee Petriz for.
One, two, three, four. All right, I'm sorry, what was that? Okay. Okay, it looks like we are all back. One, two, three, four, trustee. Oliver, there you are. Great. Are we ready to proceed? Okay. And thank you, everyone, for pretty much keeping on target. I think we're going to just continue to do that through the rest of this meeting and be able to complete when we are supposed to. Our next our next area of discussion is discussion of the data as it pertains to student achievement and discussion of a transformative curriculum. These two items are kind of being taken together because they seem to flow one into the other. And so we are ready to begin that discussion. Who would like to kick it off? Trust Chancellor, would you like to get us started?
Yeah, I haven't really added much to these conversations. But yes, I want to thank trustee Petritis for meeting with Erin McBean and I and the three college presidents. Just have a kind of a pre-conversation. And we did feel like that the items were related. We've allocated a full hour, though, however, so I think this is just going to be a conversation that flows. And trustee Petritis, I don't know if you want to, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but I, again, I see this as a board discussion. We do have Vice Chancellor McBean and the three presidents as well, and we're just happy to round out the discussion among the board members unless Erin, you had anything else that you'd like to add before we get started? No? Okay.
So I'll, I can start just a little bit about our conversation around the use of data. I do, I'm getting a little echoes, maybe it stopped, okay. I have some more to say specifically around open educational resources and transforming curriculum. But maybe can, I'd like to just, I'd like to first to start to talk about data and then maybe maybe halfway into our time, start, start there. And then there'll definitely be some overlaps. I guess I just want to kind of just start with kind of an invocation of sorts, which is to say that, you know, there's a lot of great data that the district and the colleges are using, gathering, monitoring, making decisions based on, et cetera. So there's like really good practice in place. That's kind of what I gathered from when, as we were talking earlier in the week. And I guess my question was really about, you know, what are, so two things, you know, do we have a culture or how can we help? You know, from a policy perspective of thinking about a culture of using data. And I made the distinction of it not being data for decision-making, right? It's not that you go look for data to make a decision. It's that you have an issue or something you want to address. And then you look at what is that data and information that you could be using to actually solve that, solve that issue, not unlike the conversation we just were having, right? How do you get more informed? How do you make decisions? But the piece that I'm very interested in specifically, I think as we work on these processes overall in the district are, are that continuous improvement piece. And, you know, how for continuous learning purposes, it not just data for compliance. I think, and Erin, you can certainly speak to this, I think, when it comes to, you know, state reports and things that we have to do. We're, you know, at the head, we're at the top of our game there. And I think, you know, just sort of opening the conversation about what are those ways in which we could be not only embedding these practices into everybody's workflow, right? That's not just administrators, but faculty, program heads, et cetera. Also, talking about the transparency of data. And I'm really interested around student access to data. You know, much like is it like when you go, you know, there's been the issue in the medical profession when the doctors kind of in the olden days didn't want to give you your, you know, all your results and things. You're like, wait a minute, this is my body. You just extracted something from, why can't I, why can't I see that? Similar, I think that students have often, you know, not understood how data is being made to make decisions about their pathways that we are encouraging them or suggesting or telling them to take. You know, a student might end up in some special program for first generation students studying science. But they might not understand how they got there or because they've come from a identified underrepresented group that therefore encourages them. And so you just sort of end up there and like, oh, I'm here, but they don't know why. And there is some interesting research that has showed that students also want to understand why we as, you know, you as, you know, educational professionals are making the decisions that we're making about them. So anyway, there's a very interesting, I think, piece about student access to data as well. So those are some of the kind of the high, you know, the, the high level issues I'd love for all of you who are at that call to sort of jump in as well. I know this is, I would love for you to jump in to sort of give some more context. I know this is a conversation also that we want to, the whole board to be engaged in and thinking about data use. But that was sort of the context of that conversation.
Erin.
Sure. Thanks, Tom, and thank you trustee Petritis for putting this conversation on. You know, I, I think where I would start is the the board has worked over the past five, six years since the initial adoption of its strategic plan to specify the types of metrics that we want to hold ourselves accountable to. Right, those metrics that we want to be public with, transparent with, and to evaluate ourselves about how we're doing. A lot of those metrics, and we shared them at the October retreat, really focused on our completion agenda as a district. But I, I think that we definitely always want to do is to continue to look at those and refine those as we have interest as a board. So we have been adding to and refining our current, you know, scorecard, if you will. And I know that some folks aren't as big a fan of scorecard, but at the same time, when we designated ourselves, is what we're saying, we want to be held accountable to as a district. And so I like the fact that we have identified our own scorecard that isn't simply a compliance report from the state. Trustee Oliver requested, for example, at that meeting that we do some disaggregation with international student populations and really be clear about domestic students and looking at those kinds of distinctions. And so we've done that and that'll be part of the revision when we do our next study session on, on our strategic plan. You'll see that in that scorecard. Had conversations, trustee Pimentel, about what are we doing to communicate the impact of our career education programs, right? And the, and the direct impact for students who are in those and in the, the community. And so we've put that question to our workforce task force to say, so we'd like to have, you know, one or two metrics that are very clearly communicating what the impact of these programs are. So I expect that we'll be able to bring those forward to the board as well. And so that's just one area, one way to start this off is, you know, it's, it's we have been able to define what we're interested in in order to be held accountable for the work that we do. And with new board members, yourself and trustee Pimentel, we'll have new perspectives too on, you know, what is, what are the type of information that we believe we should be communicating in our effectiveness? Just earlier in this conversation today, the, the question about, you know, employee demographics, right, and how are we communicating, you know, what the, the demographics of our current staff, faculty administrators are? How does that match with our student populations? How does that match with our county demographics? Yeah, that's a, that's a great question and that is absolutely essential information to communicate, to hold ourselves accountable as a district that says it's committed to equity and social justice, right, in all of its practices, including hiring practices. And so, you know, I shot a quick note to Cheng Yu that we have resources available to develop dashboards. And we just have not had the, the, the individuals interested previously in having those public. So I think that our commitment is to continue to put out that information in a, in an accessible way, in a transparent way to always communicate, you know, what is actually going on and then what's the impact of our efforts? So that's, that's some of the, the areas that I'm looking forward to working with this board on is developing more. What information do we absolutely want to be public facing to communicate the impact of our work?
And I just want to add to the context too, there were a couple of other things that came up. President Moreno, you had said, you had talked about how faculty had been complaining before that they didn't have access to data. I don't know if you want to speak briefly about, you know, some of those ways in which you have, again, in your, in your efforts around transparency have made sure that that in fact happens.
Sure, thanks for the opportunity, trustee Petritis. And, you know, I come from private sector. I was a business owner for a long time, for almost 30 years. And, and so I do appreciate so much the concept of continuous improvement. So I'm, I feel like I'm bringing that to Skyline College. And I also am all about sort of customer satisfaction or in this case stakeholder satisfaction. And one of the things that came forward very early on in August and September when I started was yeah, faculty conversations around not having access to data around their own sort of department performance. And and so I, you know, I have also relatively new dean of pre. So each of the colleges have a, a planning and institutional effectiveness office. And so I met, had several meetings with her. And we both got very excited about the possibility of giving the faculty what they wanted and what they needed. And I interpreted their, you know, concern as being passionate about what they do and wanting to also engage in, in improvement and ensuring that students' needs are being met. So we embarked on a little bit of research, found out that the district has this, the tableau reporting system. And so we jumped on that and entered into a series of dashboard building. We, we've only just begun. And so we're building these public dashboards. You can go on our website and see them. And it's the, basically the data generated from banner made to look user friendly. And people can, you know, manipulate that data by checking or unchecking certain boxes. And so we're very excited about moving that forward. And I just, you know, faculty were full of joy and are very satisfied with what we're working on to make that data accessible. And since it's public on our dashboard, it's also accessible to students. So I also appreciate your, you know, concern to make sure that students have access to the data for their own, you know, career and educational planning.
The other piece that, I'm sorry, was there a question, Tom?
I know, I was looking to see if someone else had their hand.
Another, I think, question that came up that I, that I think is important and I was intrigued by in terms of where are the, what are the data we could use? To look at this is, you know, what does the future hold? Sort of post pandemic. What is the, what might a high, you know, what, what do students really want? What has changed? What don't they want to go back to? Kim, I think you, I think all three of you raised this truly. Yeah, what, what are those questions and what kind of data should we be gathering now? Which raises this larger question of how we go about gathering data? Who do, you know, how do we? I don't mean we as the board, but how do we as a district decide we'll be collecting that data? Is it always campus-based? When do those efforts have to be district coordinated? But what is it that we need to know about the student experience now and what students are looking for? You know, six months or a year from now? President Lopez, maybe you also want to, you know, talk a little bit about what some of your questions were there? Because I think they were intriguing and things that we should be thinking about.
Yeah, this was a, I don't know if the, the other trustees know this, but we all, presidents and, and our, our chancellor met with trustee Petritis a few nights ago. And we're having this conversation in preparation for this afternoon. And so she asked us, you know, what, we know you're, you're collecting a lot of data, but what are some of the things that you're wrestling with right now in our roles? Where we, we might not have the data. We, we have gaps in the data or we need to think of ways to collect it. And so I shared with her that the thing that we're wrestling with right now on our campus, and I'm sure it's throughout the district is, is we know eventually that we're going to be able to be recovering from COVID. We know that there'll be a day in the future, right? In the near future where we can start bringing folks back to campus through student services and instruction. But we don't know, I mean, I think what we know for sure is it's not going to look like February of 2020. It won't look like that again for us. We hear from statewide surveys and from our own local surveys that students are going to want more hybrid courses and student services and support. And they're going to want that, you know, they've told us they're going to want, they want us to have more community, you know, provide more community for them in the classroom in this hybrid environment. And so, you know, the fact, the thing I was thinking about is, well, then there's things we could be doing right now, you know, throughout our campuses. And of course, it's related to technology, whether that's, you know, putting more technology into our classrooms and into our meeting rooms so that we're prepped for this hybrid operation that may go on just for a year or two, or who knows, might be the way that we're just doing business for the next five to 10 years. But these are big dollar, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a costly thing, right? Building up your technology, putting them into your classrooms. And then, of course, there's about needing more people to do all of that kind of work too. And that takes time to plan and prep for all of that. And, and yet it could be as soon as this fall or spring that we're starting to bring more and more folks back. And we want to be prepared to continue to meet the needs of our students who may, you know, be needing to prioritize their work first as they get jobs again in our economy and school around that. So that's the kind of information, you know, I'm dying for. That's the kind of information I want to know. How do we collect that information? Is it through interviews? I mean, I think it's through all of it, but that's what's on my mind right now is in preparation for the new normal at SMCCD.
Thank you.
President Moore, did you want to add into that conversation as well, your perspective? Not sure if you're there, but.
Let me ask you, the, the data that we collect in the, the way that we use it towards student achievement, how, how, how helpful will it be in, for transfer students who are looking to move on to the four-year universities as far as their application statuses, their ability to move from our institutions to those? Are there ways that we can improve what we're doing that will then make it easier for them as well?
Um, I'll, I'll take a stab at that one for you, Tom. Trustee Nurse.
Thank you.
By Stetson. So, and, and, and related to, to, to trustee Petritis' comments. So as, as some of you, you know, who've been around a little bit. So we've been implementing our, our Salesforce CRM over the past couple of years. It's a, a multi-phase project. I think we've got 10 phases lined out over the next several years in order to fully implement that system. And we're, we're successfully moving into stage three and four at this point. And what I've suggested, as Chancellor Claire said, want to line out the, the next several board meetings. Definitely going to bring a big update to the board on where we are in that process. Because at the heart of the CRM is that continuous improvement cycle. Because the CRM starts to collect a lot more data and then gives us ideas of where we have gaps that we need to identify. And so right now, we're on the front end of that student journey process with the CRM. All the way from, you know, first contact request for information and, you know, sending messages. And is that, is that resulting in successful transition from inquiry to application to enrollment, right? So really focus on the, the front end of the pathways. The full implementation phase takes a student journey all the way through our institution, their experience with, you know, what are called success teams. And then eventually to when they leave us and moving on from our institution and then alumni relations and contacts. So it's part of that phase. And, and, and one of the things that we look forward to is a lot more data back about where students might be experiencing barriers in that lifecycle, in that process. You know, quick little pieces of data right now, because we didn't have anything before. But we know that from inquiry to application, we have a 24% progress rate right now. So we have a baseline finally, right? And, and we didn't have that before. We didn't have systems to be able to track it. And so now we have a baseline of 24%. And the CRM team is doing, you know, what they call AB testing. So we're going to try a set of messages for this group of students and a set of messages for this group of students and see if we can increase that, 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 that flow from just inquiry to application. And it's that kind of incremental improvement that really the CRM system is, is designed to help us with. And then that will eventually get into, you know, are they able to move on and be successful after they move on? Because we can keep that contact with them all the way through their entire lifecycle, right? Not, not lose that gap. So that, that's, that's one aspect of, you know, some of the work. And for those who are around for it, you know, it, it took us three years from conceptualization to implementation, just to begin that process. And now we're about two years deep in that implementation. So it's been a five-year process just to even get where we are with that. But, you know, we are one of the only districts, I believe, the only district in the state that has implemented that type of a solution. Because we know we'll get that data. Trustee Petritis, to your earlier point, though, what it also introduces is the opportunity, but also the responsibility. Because we're going to be tailoring messages to students a lot more specifically because we have a system that's able to do that. But to your point, it will be essential in that to make sure that students know why they're receiving those messages and to be very transparent with that and keep that in mind. Because, you know, technology systems are, they're, they're, they're not, they, they're trying to get close. They're not fully sentient yet. They're not human systems. And so we don't want to allow our technology to be designed in a way that unnecessarily tracks students into certain areas if that's not where they want to go. And so we always have to be conscious of that. But to your point, no, we, we will be getting very specific in our tailored messaging, but always want to ensure that we're, we're communicating why students are receiving the messages that they are. So that's, that's just an update, a brief update on that one. But I expect to bring something much more robust back to the board at a future meeting for that update on the CRM implementation.
Chancellor Claire.
Yeah, so, and Erin, it is a nice kind of a setup for a statement that I want to make. I've made it via email in the past, but, you know, my hope, my vision for our, our data, our research function is to get beyond the basics that we, you know, I, I was talking to trustee Petritis when we met. It's like, one of my frustrations with research, we have a lot of it, but it tells me, it doesn't tell me anything I didn't already know. And I know that sounds, but it's, it's not predictive that much. It confirms things and that's important. And we, the colleges definitely use data in a, in a very good way. And, you know, we could take it through an entire program review cycle. And it's important work, so I don't want to, I don't want to diminish, you know, what we do both at our district and frankly statewide. But we, you know, we just, we need to get much higher fidelity data. There needs to be a lot more fidelity in our data so we can, we can spot those things, those, give it, that data can give us those insights that we don't currently have. And, and I realize there's an ethical issue as well. You know, you, you can talk about big data and predictive analytics and, you know, we know all those stories and you've got to be very careful about it. But my hope is that we, as, as we, particularly as we continue to implement the CRM, we're going to be able to capture a lot of data and it's going to give us different slices. I also think we need to start asking the right questions. We're going to give you a report on the work of the district anti-racism council. I'm hoping by the end of this month, but if not, maybe the following month. And there was a faculty member, she made a really good point. And she said, you know, when you look at underrepresented students or in this case African-American students, you can't just look at a success rate, you know, could, a student could have a great success rate. And yet are we asking the right question? What about their experience? Are we asking that question? What was their experience in terms of going through our institutions? And her, her statement was that's just as, that, you know, success rate is very important, but it doesn't tell you the whole story. And so I think it's, it's getting to that next level. When you talk about continuous improvement, we, we really got to have the data points that are going to help us give us, give us that, get us to that next level, get us to those additional insights. Again, balancing that off about the ethical uses of data, you know, artificial intelligence and all that stuff that as consumers, we all, we all are recipients of whether we know it or not. Thank you.
Can we segue into the curriculum part at this point? Or is there, is there some, something more that we wanted to share on the data piece? Yes, trustee Oliver.
Just a couple of very small points here. Vice Chancellor McBean, you just want to, just to be clear. So yeah, I, I have asked for data on success and retention and achievement. The disaggregated between resident and non-resident students. So is that going to now become the standard method of reporting? Because I would like it to be. Because I would like it to be.
Definitely, for the scorecard that we're used to seeing for our district strategic plan, when we bring that full revision forward, hopefully in March, you'll see our scorecard still has our overall set of metrics. And we've added to it based on the work of that steering committee and then completely separated for resident students versus specifically international, not non-resident, non-resident can include more than, but specifically separated for resident domestic students, international students, based on that conversation. So, yeah, that will be a regular part of that moving forward for the board.
So, I would, thank you. And I would suggest that even for, you know, internal reports that are brought to the board, not necessarily for official reporting as required by the state or other entities we report to, that we see that as well, this is a matter of course. You know, including the reports we issue on graduation and degrees and so on and so forth. And to that specific point, what I personally would like to see in our publicity materials, our market, you know, the ads we run, that we report the number of students receiving a degree or a certificate of completion, not the number of degrees awarded. Because if we are awarding 4,200 degrees and certificates to 2,500 students, I'm pulling that out of my memory banks. But what the world needs to know is 2,500 students completed the program. So, you know, I was a double major in college. You count me as two degree, you count me as two degrees awarded, where it's really one person receiving a double major. I just think that's, let's be transparent with the world. And let's report people who receive a degree or certificate of completion, not the number that are awarded. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, let's move on to the issue of curriculum at this particular point. Because I think it's important to talk about whether or not the curriculum is working and meeting the community needs. How did, did you have some initial discussions with staff prior to this? Trustee Patrizes said, can kind of frame this for us?
Yeah, well, let me start and please, there's jumping from the conversation. But I'd like to frame this, if I may, around not as much as whether the curriculum is meeting the needs, but how the use of openly licensed and freely available content can be used to better help meet the need and be adaptable over time. So, I'm talking very specifically about the use of OER, which is Open Educational Resources, simply defined as education content, any education content, you know, from reading materials to whole course syllabi, everything in between that are freely available, openly licensed to be remixed, adapted, distributed freely, et cetera. And all of the campuses have some amount of OER happening. I'm not sure, we don't yet know all of that. That would be a great thing to find out. But there, I know Skyline has a whole page that talks about the number of zero textbook cost courses and degrees. And this certainly is going to, I think, filter into the conversation about college affordability and free college or college promise, et cetera. So, if I may, if I may, President Nurse, I want to say it's not just about whether curriculum is meeting the needs. You know, I think we have on some assumption that we can say, you know, it is. Well, how do we know that? That's certainly, you know, something that I think ties into our data conversation. But it's sort of, it's potential that I think we've begun to tap. That is what's really there. And I wanted to say, you know, I'm speaking, bringing my expertise in open educational resources as a board member. It's not at all about, you know, if I think that, you know, we should be doing it differently. It's not my, it's not my role to be talking about curriculum changes and curriculum that, you know. So, it's sort of, I don't know if you know, like, the federal government can't get involved in curriculum decisions. They can provide professional development, and they could provide, you know, forums. Well, similarly, as a board member, that's, I'm not in the business of curriculum at all in that regard. But as a policy issue, I very much am, and I'm going to be also advocating that for the district. I want to know, would it be useful? Just give me a quick thumbs down if it's not. I have a few slides to talk a little bit about OER, sort of at the like federal and national level and sort of the state commitments, too. I think I could probably whiz through it in 10 or 15 minutes. But I don't, if we think it would be helpful, I'll do it. If not, I don't want to take up our very precious time here together doing that.
I'm going to leave that to you, if you think you can get through it in a short period of time.
Can I see some nods or like, would you rather just have a conversation? Or do you want to just sort of see this from a broader perspective? Broader perspective, yes?
Educators, Lisa.
Okay.
Don't cut into our time on free community college, please.
But this is absolutely related to free community college. So, let me share my screen. I'm going to see, assuming I have privileges. Tell me if you can see this without me having to put it into PowerPoint.
Yes, we see.
Slide mode, okay. Briefly, so at the federal level, Congress has passed three different tranches of federal aid. It went from, I think, $5 million to $7 million. Out of the, there's been, it's gone up slightly, maybe then it went to $8 million the next year. There were, there were RFP, they were, RFPs that they put out, the consortium of, in some cases, institutions or even states applied for together. I just say this so you know that this is a lot of federal interest at this level. There's an appropriations bill to support the use and creation of open textbooks. There's the Affordable College Textbook Act. I suspect we're going to see a lot of this, which was sort of laying dormant for the last four years, come up in the Biden administration, because a lot of this, in fact, came under the former Department of Ed. In the past, there's been a lot of OER at the federally level, the TACT, which was a Workforce Investment for Community Colleges Act. That was a $2 billion appropriation that went to, again, through an RFP process to colleges, to community colleges that were creating CTE programs with the requirement that they meet a high, you know, the appropriate level of demand for what those programs were in their communities, as well as all of the resources they created had to be openly licensed. So, this is something that the government is really taking seriously about saying, if you get government money to do this now, it has to be openly licensed. The Department of Labor created a creative mandate that everything that they create has to be Creative Commons licensed. We don't have time to talk about that, but just know that it's an alternative licensing structure. The U.S. State Department created an openly licensed playbook. And so, the Department of Education also has an open licensing rule, which they put into place almost four years ago, which now they're just realizing they have to actually, like all good legislation, it doesn't have teeth or people behind it. Now, they have to actually implement it. Because there's a lot of resources that have been created with government grants that aren't openly licensed. At the state level, this is now, this date is a year old. So, but then there were 26 states, including California, that had enacted at the state level OER policies within either their governments or their Departments of Education. This is all actually at the higher ed level. Some ways that they were doing that, it was establishing statewide councils of OER. The library consortiums are very involved in OER, different kind of OER grant programs, supporting course conversions and Z degrees. I don't know if, how we've done it at the district so far, if the Z degrees in the OER that we have, if how you supported those. So, I'd be curious to know. Research studies, and of course, course markings is now required in California. So, the course marking basically says that within institutions, your, either your registration systems and your course catalogs have to say whether or not the course is using low-cost or no-cost curriculum materials. I think it's in seven or eight states now. There might be a couple of states that have added. There's some tension around, around where you set the boundary of no cost or low cost. Because sometimes publishers are now giving these $25 bundles of things, which aren't really open, but they managed to slide into this low-cost category. So, it's not truly OER. But anyway, so that's just kind of tension. I'm not sure where we are and if we're using inclusive access type of, I hope. I hope to hear from that, I hope we're not. There's also just, you know, OER, and this is what I wanted to say, Tom. It isn't so much about, it's not OER for the sake of OER. It's really an approach for, it's a practice for how to meet other goals. So, there's a lot of work going around about accessibility. And the accessibility movement has really supported OER. Because if you have content that is remixable and can be used, how is it accessible to people with disabilities? So, there are several big, an OSEP, which is the Special Education part of the Department of Ed at the federal level has several multimillion-dollar efforts in this area and are very much supporting this move to OER. I just want to say something about students. Some of the biggest pushes for the use of OER has happened from student movements. The CalPerg and the Pergs in general have created initiatives and petitions and pressured universities and other colleges to adopt OER very much from the affordability perspective. So, this is just an example, there's students who have, you know, filed petitions to the antitrust divisions. And then, lastly, but not least, not least, leastly, really, some of the benefits we're seeing of OER now are around the open pedagogy in practice. So, affordability, so John, this totally, you know, is about affordability. But it also, and this is where, you know, I'm out of my trustee lane here. This is about academic synods, you know, faculty synods really looking at this as a faculty practice and deciding whether they're going to take this on or not. But there's, there's impact research that's really showing how the use of OER is impacting the professionalism, you know, the professional development of faculty who are updating their course syllabi for the first time in 15 years of replacing the $300 chemistry book with very high-quality open educational resource textbooks, adapting them for certain contexts and then sharing, resharing them so other people can use them, translating them into other languages. So, there's a lot of excitement sort of around, kind of more around the practice piece of curriculum. Lastly, just from a policy perspective, this is just an example of one community college in California that actually has a board policy around open educational resources. And I just put this up here to say I would be very interested in it at a future time with our board making some kind of statement about this and really supporting it. But this definitely has to come from sort of the ground up. So, it has to come from faculty and the colleges and the presidents to really embrace this. And from that, I think we could make a really strong policy and be a leader in the state around this. You might know that in the recent Newsom's budget, there was, there's a $15 million line item around OER. We don't exactly know how that's going to be used yet. But that's just happened in the last, within the last month. So, did I do 10 minutes? I think I did. That was kind of a quick run-through. But I just wanted to kind of give you that overarching kind of view of what's going on.
Thank you. I think that was a very helpful presentation to give us an idea where we are at a variety of levels. So, how can we bring more of that to our district as far as that goes? What steps should we be looking at to avail our students of these opportunities? Yes?
Yeah, so, and thank you, because that is a great, it's a great start to lay in a foundation for the board to understand. So, a couple of notes on where we are, and this relates to President Lopez, your comments about, you know, what are we going to need coming out of this pandemic, right? And so, this movement to increase OER resources is huge and related to even our next topic. So, I'll give you a little bit. So, if I need 1.6 million in direct aid to students for the Promise Scholars Program right now, because that's what I need every year for 2,000 students, about 600,000 of that is for textbooks. And so, as we look to continue to expand access to that program, but just reduce the cost of education in our district in general, the expansion of OER is an essential component of that. It really is. Of course, that takes resources in and of itself. So, you know, we have, I think, one resource librarian currently dedicated to focusing on OER. And that's Amy Maloney, she's up at Skyline, she's phenomenal. We did pull together a group specifically for that federal grant opportunity, because they've reissued those funds for this year. And so, we've already begun the process of putting together our application for that federal grant opportunity to expand OER as well. And, you know, I'm thrilled to hear, and you're absolutely right, that with the engagement of our act, and it's, we might be able to bring forward a board policy to consider, to, you know, increase that speed and carry that momentum through. So, we have a model that we've used to engage faculty based on a small grant that was received. But yeah, this is, this is one of those areas of looking, you know, future forward, where we need to be, where I'd love us to be as a district, too, is to just dramatically increase the speed that we adopt OER resources for all of those reasons that were stated. And it's an equity issue as well, right? When we talk about really removing financial barriers to accessing education, this remains one of the largest costs. And, but now, it's somewhat within our control as a district and with, working with our faculty to, you know, make, you know, Z degrees a reality, you know, across all three of our institutions. So, it's a great topic and definitely relates to a free higher education is having these resources available.
Tom, Tom, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you, my fax machine went off. I didn't think you guys wanted to hear all the clunking. Well, I think, you know what, that's a lot of information, Trustee Holliver.
Well, first, thank you, Trustee Patrice, for that material is really quite valuable. I'm just thinking that the last item, which was from, I think, West Hill's Community College District, if you could share that with us, I'd like to read it. And I don't see why we can't initiate a shared governance or participatory governance review of a policy, you know, that would be modeled on this with our own refinements. Yeah, you know, we can start that ball rolling and send it through participatory governance, and maybe it could be back to us in a couple of months.
Sounds good. All right, well, yes, Trust.
That's okay, never mind. It looks like you're ready to move, so that, I don't know.
No, no, I just basically wanted to see if we have any more comments on that. Because I think we really, this one really got the ball moving on that. So, thank you, Trustee Patrizes and all who contributed to this discussion. And if it looks like we can move forward, that would be, that would be a great, a great benefit to everyone and free up resources that we can definitely spend in other ways that'll benefit our students even more valuably. So, is that what we're looking to do then? We'll take that information that you have, see if we can refine it, make it work for us, and then see if we can move in that direction. That pretty much, we're on that same page.
Yes, and I didn't know if the, any of the college presidents want to speak to. Do you have any statements like that as a college so far that we should begin with? You've just had, you've just had efforts that have moved forward.
Well, we do have something in our Ed master plan regarding open educational resources that I could cut and paste and send to you, but it's very broad.
That'd be great. Glad to start with where you are, yeah.
Okay. I'm sure CSM will do the same. Everyone will pull our resources, we'll get it all in there. Exactly what we're looking for, the team approach, right?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
There might be some opportunities to around, like I said, I'm paying very close attention to this 15 million too, from Governor Newsom's budget to see what that, where that ends up and how it might become available. Go ahead, President Claire.
I was just gonna add, and I was so happy to see that board policy and about ready to text the president of West Hills a little more, but um we, you know, the nice thing is we do have some, some really good connections with 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 folks that are leaders in the state. And of course, we're so lucky to have trustee Petritis as really an expert that gets invited to speak to our experts. But I, this was a board topic a couple of years ago, if you recall. So I think it's, and it it's definitely connected to curriculum as well. And I think that's the other exciting piece of this is the, you know, the opportunity for faculty to really engage in that curriculum development process and and kind of contribute to the the commons, if you will, of of some of these materials. So I'm I'm really excited, it's it's a, I feel it's a win-win. It's obviously a win for our students, but I think it it actually furthers our our curriculum development and and really the craft, I would call, of of teaching. So you can, I can, I can tell you from our perspective and we'll we'll be happy to engage the academic senate. But I would love to see this initiative continue to move.
Sounds good. Is it insider trading if I go sell all of my shares of McGraw Hill?
If you're reading your, if you're.
Want to make sure.
If you're reading your, you know, your stock reports, you can see that it's already going down. It's already downward trending, so you don't need this.
You want to get rid of those polar shares in Polarite as well.
I'm investing in Golden Books, those are my favorite ones. Great, thank you so much, trustee Petritis, for bringing this on. And we're making immediate progress, it's terrific. You know, we had a break, but you know, we are moving along. I, do we just continue, what do you think?
I think so.
Yes, let's continue. Okay, so our next discussion moves to the sixth item, which is a discussion of tuition-free SMCCD. So how will we kick this off? Who would like to start?
I, I.
Yes, go ahead, Jeff, so you can.
I'm gonna suggest, I know this may come as a shock to you, but I feel like this ought to be started by trustee Pimentel. And of course, I, and I don't want to leave out trustee Goodman, because I know he's been involved. But I think John was the one who actually requested this, but there has been some some efforts as well. So if that's okay with you, trustee Goodman, is it, it's okay if I turn, okay. So trustee Pimentel, it's it's all yours, you got, you have five minutes.
And he just used one and a half of yours, now go ahead.
Thank you very much. So I think you all know I'm a, I'm a big fan of this as a policy goal, but there's some real basis behind the concept itself. We spend a lot of time talking about equity on several levels, but the most fundamental thing that we can do to promote equity would be to make our community college maximally accessible so that folks from first generation college families and and under-resourced communities have the access to our institution and their ability to then move up the, move up the socioeconomic ladder of opportunities. So it's it's pretty obvious, and I, and I also, you know, used to work in Sacramento. I totally understand how budget decisions get made. And I, and I recognize that in 1985, a small adjustment was made to start charging enrollment fees. Prior to that, the community college was free in California. And in fact, as part of, everybody knows, as part of the the master plan, the whole point is to be accessible to 100% of the of the students who who want to come. And to be an access point either for higher education or career technical training that will improve your, your career and earnings prospects. So, you know, what I hope to accomplish with this discussion really was four things. One, if anybody wants to talk about the goals of free community college and whether or not those are good goals, we should start there. Second, I want to share a few facts. Third, I want to talk about, from a policy perspective, you know, this will require potentially trade-offs in terms of how we allocate our time, our money, our resources. And we should be upfront and transparent and talking about that. And then assuming that we get past all of those things in the first, in my remaining two and a half minutes, then I'd like to have a really a discussion about how we might go about implementing this. And I've always said to anybody who engages me on the subject, I'm not exactly sure how we do this. And in fact, I'm quite flexible as to the pace at which we do it, the programs which we implement in order to accomplish it. It's probably not just an across-the-board policy decision with one, with one, you know, wave of the wand. It's it's a number of individual changes to certain policies so that we can maximize the effect of the investment in hitting the target communities that we're trying to help the most here. Student population, so is. So, so, you know, that's, that's, that's my goal. In terms of the the facts, you know, we've got a $208 million general fund budget. If you count in the other special funds that we get from federal and state sources and other sources, plus all the money we spend on on through, through the taxpayer approved bond, we're spending almost a half a billion dollars a year in the community college district. And I I will continue to ask these questions until somebody corrects me. I think the the results that we get out of that is we send about 2,400 students a year to four-year colleges, and we graduate about 2,000 certified CTE grads who go on to improve their, improve their their work potential. And it seems like an awfully big investment that we're making from our community for a a small number of people to benefit. So, you know, my goal would be, let's, let's be creative about how we think about resources. If I'm wrong on any of those numbers, by the way, somebody please tell me. And in that we also reach out to other sources for funding here. And to that end, I I tip my hat to Maurice, who, under his leadership, we've started a dialogue, a formal dialogue with the county supervisors. And we're asking them to make this a countywide priority in which the benefits of free community college in San Mateo County won't just accrue to our school district, it'll accrue to the whole county. And so we want them to be at the table both on a policy level and at a, at a financial contribution level. And the third leg of that stool would be if we can get around this policy goal and if we can get the county supervisors on board, then we go out to the private sector who also will benefit from increased access and upward social and economic mobility throughout all of our communities and get them to start contributing to this broad vision of returning community colleges to their original promise of of free access. So, I mean, that's my, my overall, my overall summary of where I hope we'll go with this. But as we talked about it at the last board meeting, I intentionally went last as far as expressing my point of view. And I heard very clearly each of the four trustees say, from at least a policy perspective, this is a goal that we want to really pull together for and around and and towards. And exactly how we get there, we may have some disagreements on pace and 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 funding and trade-offs, but that we were all crystal clear on the, on the objective. And so I guess if it's okay with with you, Tom, I'd like to, you know, go around the room, starting with the trustees, but also with the staff and the college presidents to say, is this a, is this a goal that we need? You know, I've heard some people respond to me and say, oh, well, we already have a bunch of programs for poor kids to be able to go to college. You don't need to give them free tuition or free enrollment fees. And this clearly is not just about enrollment fees, as as Lisa just pointed out and and Aaron pointed out, a big component of this is cost of books. It also includes cost of transportation. It can also include cost of eating and living so that students can commit the time and create the space in their life to complete, you know, what we're asking of them. It also might mean, you know, we we talked about it a little bit before, it also might mean changing the way we deliver our services. I mean, I can't tell you how impressed I am with the way this administration has figured out how to go from zero to 60 on distance learning in response to COVID. I mean, it's incredible. You guys are delivering 100% of your classes or whatever, 98% of your classes, online, full-time, it works. I'm I'm sure it's, there are plenty of bumps in the road, but it's working. And think about how, when you put that in the context of affordability and access, now, you know, you don't have to get up to campus between nine and 12 a.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays to take your class. If you can take it on Saturday morning at at six, when you actually have time to be able to do it when your kids are asleep and you haven't started your second job for the, for the day. And that's what we're supposed to be doing. So when I talk about free community college, it really encapsulates all of what I just described. And seems so obvious to me, I might be missing something that's really obvious to others that that makes this either an undesirable goal or an impossible goal from a financial or or resource perspective. So can I ask that we kind of go around this room with first trustees and then also with staff to say, is this really what we want to set out as a big hairy audacious goal? And if we all agree to that, then I'd like to spend the rest of our time trying to figure out how to get there with, what are our options?
Absolutely, who would like to be next?
Are you looking for a yes, a simple yes or a no? Let's continue, or or do you want us to go?
Or man, riff all you want. Yes, start with yes, and then talk for as long as you want.
Yeah, I think it's a yes, and to your point, I don't think this is impossible. And or nor is it undesirable. I definitely believe this is something we should be striving to to do. And I do believe we already are in many ways. Our staff, I believe, is is doing many things. You know, for for me, it started with, you know, something Regina would say, former president of Skyline, getting our students in, getting them through and getting them out. And I know we changed that out part, but I really think it should be getting a man, getting them through and getting them beyond college, community college. And and so with that said, when I was a K-12 board member and an early child educator, I participated in the big lift. And all, we were always talking about how is this big lift? Obviously, if we had the funds, it would not have been just a big lift for up to K through third. It would have expanded all the way through community college. And so I see us as a district, the responsibility of our county and the leadership of our county to see this as a continuation of the big lift. And with that said, you know, how do we get there? You know, how do we enhance some of the efforts that we're already doing? How do we focus on open textbooks? Early access to college through dual and concurrent enrollment? How do we explore and take advantage of legislative action that can support us, you know, minimizing that that cost? And I thought about, you know, something we talked about, and that's like a college launch scholars, you know, not necessarily the big lift, but the the big launch. How do we address that? And then I thought about how do we get young eighth graders to commit to participate more in a minimum level of dual and concurrent enrollment offerings that we provide, that will provide them early access to guidance pathways, meta majors at an earlier point, minimizing their costs, number one, to pay for college. By the time they graduate high school, they will be let, there, there's less time that they would have to spend on our campuses, and they would be able to, you know, prepare them to a four-year university, leaving less resources that we've expended and then provide more resources for other students. That's one way we can maximize and optimize, you know, the resources that we have to spend on students. And then at the same time, point the finger and and reach out to our our county partners and say, hey, we need funds, we need you to chip in on this, which we have. There was an ask in this meeting that trustee Pimentel and Chancellor Clara, where we're saying, hey, we want millions of dollars. We don't want just, you know, a token couple hundred thousand dollars. We're, we're doing that big ask, and we're saying, hey, we need millions. But also, we have to make sure we're doing our part. I I think the number that Vice Chancellor McVain mentioned earlier, 600,000 in in book costs. If we can shave that off and and do, you know, open textbook, couple that with making sure that we direct monies from the foundation to not focus on international students or students that are not our residents, then that might very well get us another million dollars. And so, and I'm sure there's other efficiencies that we can use here to ensure that we're, we have the resources and the funds to to get us closer to expanding not just our promise program, but hopefully this, you know, college launch scholars program as well. So, you know, I'm all for it. I'm all for doing our part as electeds to make sure our county is doing their part and then kind of supporting what our administration is going to continue to do to get us there by following these other guidelines that have already been mentioned.
It's awesome. And and I want to, I want to reemphasize something that I didn't, I didn't say, Maurice, that you said very clearly. I totally recognize that everybody on this call has been working on this. In fact, probably dedicated your career to this concept. So I don't mean to be coming in saying, hey, let's take the last step here. I I 100% want to recognize that, in fact, a lot of work, a lot of sweat, a lot of trade-offs have already been made. And 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 really, we just need to push through that last couple of yards into the goal line. Who's next?
Yes, who'd like to be next?
I'll go.
Trustee Petritis.
Yes. So again, in the spirit of not repeating what other people have said, in full agreement with everything I've heard on this thus far, some some thoughts on some strategies, you know, there's the 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 National College Promise initiative of which I know Dr. Moreno, that that Skyline is one of the promised programs. I don't know if one of the first things is to see, and I know that the Promise Scholars Program is set to be implemented in the other colleges as well, but I'm, I'm, I don't know if we have direct kind of contact with as those of the other colleges with the Promise Scholars, but let's do that. I've I've had some involvement with a, with a college promise initiative as well. The reason why I bring this up is, you know, they they are both tracking, giving, you know, a lot of consultative advice. They're connecting regional partners who want to work on college promise efforts. There's many college promise efforts through California. I don't think there are regional, I just did a quick look while we're on the phone here. If you go to collegepromise.org, you can see, I don't see that there, there isn't a California college promise, but some states do have their own college promises, they tend to be the smaller ones. It would be interesting, A, for us to get our, all of our colleges in there and then maybe look at this a bit regionally too. I mean, I know there are other, I know, I think Deans has a college promise. I mean, there are other campuses who are, who are nearby to us that have them as well. This, this kind of follows on, I I think, trustee Pimentel, you know, the issue of how we have to go to with a county, where are their county funds? Where are their county? Where are their county partners that we haven't thought of yet? You know, it's interesting, and I think, as I understand of following a lot of the college promise work. And there are some great examples, I think. I'm trying to remember, I think it's an upstate New York, the others has a terrific promise program. But this issue of how you bring regional partners together, you know, well, there are different, it's 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 the issue of how do you let initiatives that have come before not sort of tread on their toes and take away from what they've done, but how do you build, you know, the sum is greater than its parts? Because if there's some really, really robust program that gets, you know, eighth graders into dual enrollment, you know, how, you don't want to, I'll just say, colonize it to say, oh, that's part of our program now here at the district, right? How did, that's the, that's the beauty of something like an umbrella, like a college promise program, is it isn't about free tuition at San Mateo County Community College District. It's really looking kind of district wide. Maybe we're big enough that it doesn't have to be regional, but really looking at that more more broadly to do that. And there's a lot, I think, a lot of good lessons learned about partnering with those efforts to bring them under a college promise sort of initiative that lets the integrity and the many decades of work that have people been doing still have its, you know, at its core, many of these are run by other nonprofits. But at the same time, find those synergies which haven't been leveraged yet. Where's their wasted? Where are their duplicate efforts? That could be in some ways, you know, if this duplicate efforts, how can that, those, that funding that's being in effort and time and resource of people be used otherwise? So it's, I think it's a lot of, it's a lot of great work that needs to be done, but I think we need some, well, I think you've just started to have some conversations, there needs to be a lot more conversations, and probably should set some goals about those, who do we need to talk to over what period of time? How do we end up, we, I think we want something kind of concrete and just to say, well, we'll chip away here and here and here isn't quite enough. I think we do need a unifying sort of statement or pledge or something like that to do this.
Even in my hope, Lisa, is that this discussion leads to that pledge, if you will, amongst us. And then we go back and create that work plan that you're, that you're talking about. There is, I mean, there is some level of specificity in in the discussions with the county. But I can't begin to put a lasso around the various federal and state and private sector grants that we might need to be going against, going after. And so maybe one of the things that that we realize in this discussion is whether it's the couple of things you just mentioned or other programs, maybe we need to invest some more money into in resources into grant writing and pursuing these pursuing these state, federal and and other programs. And we just don't have enough time and energy and staff to actually go out and grab all the money that is waiting to be grabbed. So if anybody has ideas like the ones Lisa just brought, let's put them on a list of programs we need to go investigate and try and get that catch.
Well, following up with that, go ahead, Richard. Yes.
Am I, okay, so just, let's, let's go forward with this sort of basic answer. And regarding the conversations with the county, I guess there's some point coming soon where we need the board to be engaged as a, as a full board and figuring out what what kind of deal we, you know, might be able to strike, right? So it's not, I mean, self committee. I applaud you and trustee Goodman for for having that conversation. I think it's great. It's fabulous that you got that started. Let's bring it back for some board, you know, approval, I guess. And I mean, these are obvious things, but you know, defining what types of programs of study should be given greater emphasis or priority. We have students who are here for a degree to transfer. We have students for certificate to get a career. We have lifelong learners who are here for enrichment. We have people who come back to brush up perhaps on a few specific job-related skills. I I think those are not all identical in terms of who we provide help to. So I think we we ought to have this focused on students who need help, you know, are unable to to do this on their own and who are without it, you know, really impacting their survival, their life, their their economic condition. And, you know, who have goals? And just like with promised scholars, you know, persistence in those goals is is part of the deal. And I guess the only thing I'd add is you know, the question of waiving tuition versus other forms of assistance that don't necessarily cross lines with state law. Let's look at what we can do there as one effort and you know, tuition relief as another part of the effort. Maybe we get closer to that goal in ways that are not, you know, putting us at odds with certain regulations. You know, maybe we don't, but that's a decision we make. That's a conscious decision we make. And then I just want to add in terms of the data. So this, you know, the data is last year, we had seventeen eighty-nine associate degrees graduates. We had eight hundred and seventeen certificate recipients and eleven baccalaureate degrees. So that gets to the non-duplication question. Those are the actual numbers, and I think what we may may or may not have is how many of the graduates were transferring to a four-year institution? I don't know if we have that, but it certainly would be something fewer than that seventeen hundred. And then we also need to know how many of those were non-resident or, you know, international students, because that is not an area where I have an interest in providing financial relief. We, you know, have a requirement under California law to serve the residents of California. It's not that we don't open our doors to others, but I do think there's in my personal opinion, not the same interest in providing financial assistance for non-residents. Thank you.
That brings it to me, and I and I agree with all the things that have been said as far as that goes. This needs to be a goal of ours to try and make the educational opportunities that we have available to as many people as we can. And if economics are a hardship or an incentive, actually, to move forward, then we need to do that. I I'm very, very pleased that we're able to reach out to other partners as well and share some of this need because this is a county, and the county is made up of 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 community members that are our constituents, as well as city constituents, county supervisors, constituents. We all see or serve the same people. And when any element of our greater community is able to benefit and especially from an educational standpoint, which allows them to move into the workforce that improve themselves from the standpoint of an economic status and be able to, you know, it elevates all of us in our whole county. I I had a very interesting phone, called this a very great phone call this morning with Supervisor Kenapa, who has been a strong supporter of community colleges and especially Skylines alma mater. And I I was pleased to hear that he had a great meeting with the two of you, and he is very interested in moving forward and and I think that the county is is a great place for us to partner up with. They're going to need to jump through their hoops as well. And, you know, there's, there's other supervisors that need to buy in, but I I think that this is something that should be of interest to everyone that serves the people of this county. That having been said, we need to be able to tie ourselves tighter to our feeder school districts. The high school districts have a captive audience. That's where the students are before they leave and then disperse into the world. And so long as there are captive audience there, we need to build that conduit even stronger. And I know we have been doing that. And we've been making a lot of real good progress as far as that goes between the colleges and their feeder districts there. I remember one time, I think it was Richard or Dave, you know, throughout the concept of sending every graduating senior, congratulations, you have been admit, you have been granted, you know, admission, you're, you're, you're granted a a place at our community colleges, you've been, you've been accepted. And
Happen?
No, no, we never, we never actually did that, but that was, that was a thought that, you know, yours idea, Richard, I think it might have been. But I thought it was a great idea, whoever threw that out, to just make the invitation right there. And one of the things that you obviously deal with in high schools is, you know, they, they like to be able to say at the graduation, you know, we're sending this one to Yale and to Princeton at the Stanford of blah, 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 and whatever. But the reality is, is that we have so many students that basically we are there for. And we, we, we have an obligation and the high schools have an obligation to help them get to where they need to be as well. So that collaboration, we need to continue to work on. And the the straight, the good contacts that we've made now, we need to continue to build on them. I know the colleges are doing that anyway. So, yeah, I, whatever we can do to continue to do this and to bring more people on making it, making a college available to them, I would support that strongly as well.
Awesome. You raised two things, Tom, that I I want to follow up on. One was that that idea of automatic enrollment, I think is a really good one. I think it's really cheap to do. And I went ahead and reached, I reached out to the Sequoia Union High School District Board and asked them to start working on it as a so we could try and get together our registrar with the high school district registrar and figure out what it would take, you know, from an IT perspective, simply to to get access to that database and to deliver exactly that letter of invitation, even give them their G number and have them sign up and do an orientation about how to navigate our crazy enrollment process. And 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 really onboard the way you would onboard a new employee. The idea being, we want Silicon Valley to start thinking about the baseline education not being K twelve and thirty, forty percent people go to college, but the baseline education should really be K fourteen in order to compete in our information age economy. And you said something else, which was the the idea of the community college being a springboard for opportunity to transfer students as a first option, not a last option. When you look at one point six trillion dollars of student debt and how that could be managed differently by families rather than taking on crushing levels of debt to go to the colleges you mentioned, do two years of the community college, save money. You still get your sheepskin from a fancy place. And and I don't think we're, I I know we're trying to deliver that message, but it doesn't, you know, maybe it's the culture of where we live in Silicon Valley for some parts of our of our, of our communities, that they just don't see it as a, as a first option. Well, that's great. I mean, it sounds like the board is on board. Mike, you want to start us through a conversation with some of the staff, too?
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. And we, I will speak for all of us because we are one hundred and fifty percent on board. You know, I I told you guys that I want to share some of my long-term goals with you. Well, we covered one of them earlier, which is really just establish really great working relationship with the board and with the with the staff. This is another one. And just to, just to correct one thing, we actually, the promised scholars program is a district-wide program. It's implemented across all three colleges. So I want to make sure that we're all clear on that. And I I'm going to turn it over to the presidents and to Aaron, but really, I want to, I want to give a lot of credit to Aaron McBean because he really was the one when he was at Skyline that found the model in terms of the the CUNY system. So, Aaron, I know you're out of everybody on this Zoom right now, you are the expert as far as promised scholars. But all all three colleges were working on something. So for me, the only thing that I'm going to personally add to this discussion that I'm I feel very strongly about, and trustee Goodman hit upon it, you've all hit upon it one way or the other. It's that K through twelve connection, first of all. I know when CSM started on something, we called it year one, and we actually talked to a bunch of high school principals, guidance counselors, whatnots. We, we kind of keep it a different way, but what struck me is the obvious is you need a sense of, you need to give these students a sense of connection. And you need to give them momentum and direction. They need a running start coming into the the community colleges. The other thing that I would say, as I've had very polite conversations with high school superintendents, we use, we, I don't know if we still capture this, we should capture what we call take rate data. What percentage of graduates in San Mateo County, high school graduates attend one of our three community colleges? It goes up and down, but it's, it's gone, it's as high as fifty percent in some cases, and it hovers between forty and fifty percent. And my my pitch, when I talk to superintendents is, if you know, the vast majority of your students are coming to us anyway, it's time we started acting like that. And, you know, and it, and it's not trying to, it's not trying to convince that parent or that child, it's, you know, UC Berkeley or bust, that, you know, they're better off going our way. Although, you know, some of you know my story, my, my three kids all went to our community colleges first. And John, I have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more in my pocket because of that system. That's a true story. And but but I want to make sure also reaching the students that don't necessarily seek any higher education as an option. I think that's a value that we all share. So there's that tight wiring of with our K through twelve system. Latch that on to the promised scholars program because we know it works or tweak it however we need to do. But it does work. We've got the statistics and that works. And then trustee Haller on the back end, you you raised the the question about transfer. Certainly, not every single student we have coming in intends to transfer, but there's a large number. So we're not, we're, we're, you know, I'm going to quiz you all. What's, what are our three highest, what are our top four transfer destinations? What would you think? I'll just answer because we're, yeah, San Francisco State, Cal State, Spay. Inozae, what about UCs?
Davis.
Davis. Those are four. So not that we ignore the rest of them, but if that's where the vast majority of our students transfer, might we think about focusing on those four transfer destinations? I've, I don't want to put the president of San Francisco State on the spot because this is a public meeting, and I haven't talked to her in a while, but I've I've mentioned before that she comes from the Long Beach Promise. And when we talked to her just to meet her, we talked about potentially on that end of it, really kind of creating this comprehensive and ultimately what I would love to see is not, you know, trustee Petritis, to your point, it's not just us. I mean, as long as a student goes and has a higher education experience, even if they go to another system, that's okay. But my big dream is to link us regionally to the, actually, these three local transfer destinations and really do something special. And I do think, and I so appreciate trustee Goodman mentioning the big lift because I think it's going to take that kind of effort, whatever it is we call it, it is going to take a countywide effort, but we should be putting as much care and attention this county to our third graders and that very important grade in terms of reading. And I'm, I know as a resident, I'm so appreciative of that. But that that education work isn't done, right? I know I'm preaching to the choir here that, you know, unless you complete with an A degree or certificate or perhaps a baccalaureate degree, that's what it takes, as we know in this area. So the, as I said, the only other dimension I would add to this, certainly remove all those barriers, the financial barriers, those are real, but it's those linkages on both ends, both K twelve and then four year that I I think that's the place that we need to do a lot of work. I do think on where we reside with the promised scholars program, we definitely need to expand it. It's going to cost money, and it's not just the direct support to students, it's all the student support. You know, Kim Lopez just a message to her faculty yesterday, we're hiring five counselors to support the promised scholars program. Okay. It takes a lot of resource to do that. So but that piece of it, I do feel we have a good design that is actually yielding results. So anyway, you can tell I'm a little bit excited about this. It's not going to be done in a year. I mean, this is, this is a lot of work. It's not going to be done in a year. I mean, it's, this is, this is a lot of work, but I can tell you as chancellor, I'm 100% committed to it. It's, I think the most exciting thing we can work on as, as a team, frankly.
Wait a second, Mike, we just lost 50% from you. You said 150% at the beginning and.
My math's not so good.
He's getting tired.
I, I, I love this stuff. It's, it's, I think it's why we do this work.
Uh, trustee Hallibur.
Just a couple of quick comments first. On this notion of sort of sending an automatic enrollment to graduating high school students, I believe that, that we learned about that from Santa Monica Colleges, which they do quite successfully. And we've talked about it, why don't we just put this on the board as an, as an action item? And then we can go ahead with it. If there's any, you know, concern about how it'll work out, it just occurred to me, we could even test it. You know, pick half the high schools in the county and send that to them and satisfy with the others. I'd be curious to know if we see an uptick in enrollment, you know, be a way to do our, our own testing. And I guess the other.
Richard, I'll send you the memo that I shared with Shani Stevenson from Sequoia. Maybe we can use that to prompt the agenda item next week.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, we talk about things are good ideas and then there's a point for action. So I'm suggesting maybe that we're at that point. I did have a question for our chancellor and it, and I can't remember if it was CSM, but I remember we got a report a couple, maybe two, three years ago about sort of an intensive summer before you're, before you matriculate. Orientation and coursework program that seem to be doing wonders. If you could maybe just briefly tell us where we are with that, is that through all three of our campuses? And is it still going and flourishing? Cause that gets to, you know, I think also trustee Goodman's point about, you know, having those connections with, with the feeder districts and the transition and making the successful transition.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you, trustee Hallibur. And I'm going to defer to our three presidents because I believe that all three colleges have that summer transition. And it's really trying to avoid that, what they call the summer melt. I don't know if you've ever heard that where you, that students just kind of melt away on you. So we don't want that to happen. I think all three colleges are still offering the, the summer experience. I think they probably differ in terms of their intensity. It seemed to me that at one time, Skyline had a pretty intense summer effort. I know for CSM, we didn't have quite as intense effort, but I believe that all three colleges have that. So I don't know whether the presidents want to chime in or just add a little bit to it, but, but it is successful. And then there's also on top of that, a lot of times there will be sort of these intensive, intensive instruction. I, I don't, I forget what they're called. You get away from a college for a year, you, you forget it's not. Jam, summer jam. And I think all three, I think all three, I gotta, I gotta get back on campus. But I think all three colleges offer like math jams, English language jams, physics jams. I remember CSM having a physics jam, I think, or a science jam. So, uh, Kim, do you want to talk a little bit about and Jamila and perhaps Melissa, you haven't really had a summer yet at Skyline, but.
Well, I was going to check in with Aaron. I thought part of the CUNY ASAP replication model included a summer program for all the promise. Yeah. So why don't you go ahead and speak because that's, I think, something similar amongst three colleges.
Yeah. And, and to that point, and as, as this board knows, I, I, I never miss an opportunity to, to talk about the promise scholars program. But the reason is, is because it, it, it is about completion. And so when we talk about removing the financial barrier when addressing fees for students to enroll, I never want us to lose sight of. And then it's our responsibility, once we get them here, to make sure that they do get out on time, right? That they do complete, because that's the currency that can then take them to the next level in this economy. And so the summer scholars institute, trustee Hallibur, I think is what you're referencing that we talked about those couple of years ago. And it is, it's part of the intentional design of the promise scholars program. It came from the ASAP model that it's that bridge between the graduation from high school and getting students ready to, you know, be caught, be college, you know, in a college mindset and what that looks different. And so that they don't have that, that drop off between senior year and coming into, to the college. It's gone through some evolution over the past couple of years, in particular because of implementing dual enrollment and C cap. And so I think one of the lessons learned on this has been to push that engagement further and further into the actual high school experience. And hopefully connect either in senior or ideally junior year with those dual enrollment classes where they start earning the college credit. And that becomes the start of the on-ramp into the college is, is junior year college credit begins to be earned. So they're showing up with, you know, three, six, 12, 15, as much as 30, which is way out there. But even a full semester of units under their belt by the time they land on one of our three campuses. And so that is part of the intentional model and it's, it's really all about, you know, accelerating that completion. Because that's, that's what promise scholars has been and trustee Petritis, the model is replicated across all three colleges. Our, our general balance is 750 promise scholars at Skyline, 750 at CSM and about 500 at Kenyatta, you know, Massamenos, depending on the, the exact term. But that's what makes up our 2,000 across the district and that's where we look to expand. So, you know, as we, as we, and, you know, as a, as a personal point of privilege, what I love about this conversation is this is, this is kind of what I, you know, what we need is coming together as a highly effective team, right? Everybody is moving in exactly the same direction and has that sense of urgency that, that, that we're not going to, we're not going to go slow on this. The pace is going to be rapid. And so I see that, I hear that from this entire board. And that's what helps this kind of effort just accelerate and continue to grow. So I, I want to recognize that and appreciate that from the board on this topic.
Great. Well, I, I think we know where we want to keep going with this as far as that goes. And we need to, I guess, have an idea from the administration of what you can, what you're going to bring back to us next. As far as that goes, there'll be more dialogue, I would imagine, between your office chancellor and that of the county manager. And we need to continue to do our outreach and tie our, tie ourselves up with the, the high school districts. Trustee Pimentel, you brought up the, the, the concept of other funds that are out there. And I don't know really, you know, the grants and things like that, that could be available to us. If this is really an area where there is significant funds, and I don't know that there are, do we have a grant writing capacity within the district as far as that goes? People that are proficient in writing grants and can we engage them in that? And if there is a significant amount of money that can be brought in by grants, then do we want to engage some grant writers to do that for us from the outside if we have to? If obviously they're going to bring in a lot of money, it's worth to pay them something. So that might be something to think about as well as part of our goals. Yes, vice chancellor Bailey.
Good afternoon, trustees. And I'll let Aaron speak to the grant writing component for just a second. But as we're talking about other opportunities for resources, trustee Pimentel, you began the conversation with the resources we currently have, you know, in our own coffers. But as we've talked about many times, you know, we are hamstrung in some degree about how we can use those resources because of, of certain pieces. So we've had initial conversations with legislative staff about how we look at being able to gain, gain greater flexibility with the general fund unrestricted fund dollars that we do have to be able to apply to things like the, the promise. And so with this board's permission, we'd like to continue those conversations. The legislative deadline for, for bill submission is on the, the 19th. But if we could get a spot bill through Senator Becker's office, which we, we're confident that we can, we'd like to continue to explore how we gain greater flexibility for using those, those unrestricted dollars to apply to those things that you've just talked about today.
I think also to apply, but also I think it was brought up at a meeting or two ago about waivers and trying to get those waivers through legislation. So just that as well. In addition to just acknowledging that we're offering free community college already through our dual and concurrent enrollment and expanding those opportunities can be a way of continuing to provide free community college in a different way. Ensuring that those students have access and opportunity to be able to participate. And, and then obviously again, going back to the last discussion item that trustee Petritis talked about, that we can see savings through that. That's not asking for more dollars. That's saying, hey, let's, let's explore this and then we'll benefit from those cost savings as well as exploring opportunities to redirect foundation dollars to ensure that they're focused on residents versus non-residents.
Indeed, trustee Goodman, and, and great points there. And as part of what we would also look at from some legislative changes that you talked about was we were surprised when looking at the law, there is no definition of cost of attendance. At the federal level, there is, and you have it, you know, that's how federal financial aid is applied through this cost of attendance, which includes tuition, fees, supplies, books, transportation, housing, you know, cost for dependents, things of that nature. There's nothing there. So we will look to try to, to broaden that scope so that we can have greater flexibility in those areas too. So if, if this board is comfortable, as us pursuing those conversations, we'd like to do that. Keeping in mind the legislative calendar is ticking ahead of us and we want to make sure that we're not, you know, left out in this, this session of being able to, to pursue some avenues.
I think without exception, I speak for all of us that we would want you to pursue all of those avenues.
Thank you.
Yeah. And real quick on the, the grant writing piece, we do have some grant writing capacity in the district. And recently some brought on to specifically my office to pursue different opportunities. We've strategically used grants before specifically for the promise scholars program to accelerate the initial development and then the spread to the three colleges across the district. And then, you know, the, the full replication that we've been doing. So no, we'll absolutely look for those. And I always keep in mind that we, you know, grants come to an end. And so we use them to strategically expand with the anticipation that we're going to run all of these things parallel, right? And as we seek out grant monies to continue to expand, we're going to continue to seek out, you know, legislative relief to be able to identify new resources and we're going to continue to reduce costs for dual enrollment, no ER implementation, right? And we can and will run all of those things parallel at the same time, because we know what direction we're trying to get to. So I appreciate those. With regard to the legislative piece, you know, we're, I'm thrilled, we're putting in some things at the state level. But again, with the clarity from this board, we'll also be putting together a package of some, some local policy considerations, including, you know, potential fee waivers that we can consider as a district and not have to wait for potential state legislation. So I look forward to bringing those back to the board, hopefully in the next month or two at the longest.
Aaron, you mean stuff like parking fee waivers and health fee waivers and that sort of thing? Bring them on.
Yep.
I'm real curious to hear from the college presidents and, and then make sure we save some time for Bernada to tell us how we're going to pay for all this.
All right, real quick, presidents. First.
Okay, I'll go first. Well, you know, I guess the, the, the Reader's Digest version is yes, yes, yes. And I actually am kind of counting on us to do this because I've already made decisions. Internal decisions and trustee Petritis knows. The president's centennial committee or specifically our development committee, our fundraising committee has already selected the promise scholars program as a program that we're going to fundraise for and we're hoping for not the stability of it, but for the expansion of it. Our initial vision was to be able to serve all first-time, full-time students in this program. And it is a completion program. So it's a three-year commitment at $3,200 per student. And well, we want to serve all the students that need this program. So yes, in that way, and yes, in the way that I'm looking at staffing and permanent staffing for the college. So we want to free up, we have a director position right now that was promise slash dual enrollment. But there's too much work that we need to do to expand our dual enrollment efforts. So we're making a decision to, to move our personnel into full-time dual enrollment and be, and, and look at pairing the promise program with our guided pathways, which we think is a really good pairing. But also it allows for concerted effort to be in the dual enrollment, which is a key, key part to expansion of our promise completion program. And then as Mike had mentioned as well, it takes staff. So the part of the staff that you're talking about with Bernada is with the fees and the textbooks and the direct aid to students. But the other part of it, which is equally as expensive is the staffing. And that's what the colleges have been carrying. And we have been working at that through so many different measures, categorical funding, grant funding, permanent funding. And so the, the more, you know, I hear our commitment as a district to this effort, the more I can feel confident in looking at our college funding and make resource allocations that are going to support it and help grow it and stabilize it. So that's my two cents. There you go.
Thank you. Yes, president.
Yeah. So I agree with Kim and I think what the, the big lift is the 150 to one counselor student ratio. And that is very expensive to scale. And so, you know, that's a consideration. But I'm, I'm all in here and I appreciate the commitment. And we're all doing things, I think internally strategically to, to go down this road and to support this direction. And so I'd be very excited about it. And I always say, all it takes is money. And that's really, that's really what it is going to take. There is no promise scholars program in the state that doesn't require. I mean, free, free college requires a, a heavy lift. So I'm with you.
Dr. Moore.
I could, I could not agree more. I, I think for us it's about sustainment. We definitely know that promise scholars is working. We want to make sure we're moving in a direction that will allow us to continue to sustain that work, which is very consistent with free community college. So we want to make sure that the promises and commitment we've made to the students who are in the beginning of the promise scholars, in the middle of it, that we can get them through. I will echo what Dr. Marino said and that we do have the, the counseling slash retention specialist issue of that 500 to one on the caseload that we are definitely trying to work through. But we do need the resources in place to kind of keep the program going because it is connected to the district and it is branded with success. So we definitely are on, are on board. We want to make sure though, that we can sustain and keep what we've put in place because we've made promises to students that are in that program now. And if there's ways in which to expand that, to continue that moving forward, we're all on board. Thanks.
Yes, trustee Pimentel.
This is absolutely great. I'm really excited. And of course I expected everyone to have this kind of a reaction, but it's good to speak, speak it through, you know, as a team and publicly. There's another point here. This is all, you know, feels good, but I heard very clearly from the presidents that resources are a key thing. I also know that our board is under some amount of pressure because we're the only district in the state that doesn't meet the 50% rule. And every one of these counselors we hire and every dollar that we spend on, on this subject puts us further away from accomplishing the 50% obligation. And so I'd like to also make sure we bring into this dialogue, the academic senate, the, the, the represented groups and talk to them about this. I mean, we're, in, in Bernada, I'm setting you up for the big finish here. You know, we're, we're lucky to have a, a, a county with outrageously high property values, which is bad news for a lot of us, but it's good news when it comes to collecting taxes. And so we have a lot of resources to work with and I'm not trying to say that we should be spend thrifts on this point. But there's going to be trade-offs, right? And so to the extent that we spend money on this and we're moving away from the 50%, or it makes it harder to achieve the 50% goal, that's a challenge and we got to think about that trade-off. Likewise, you know, we want to make sure all of our staff, faculty, staff, all the bargain groups get a fair wage, get their, their salaries keeping up. get a fair wage, get their their um salaries, keeping up with inflation and the high cost of living in our neighborhood. And uh, and and be fair with our our employees. But um, to some extent, you know, going, when I talk about going into the freezer to take out some of Bernata's reserves here, it's it's a trade-off. We got to think about making. And uh, so I guess I want to, I want to finish this discussion with something that leads us to an action plan, both Aaron, for you to start to envision the programs that we need to adjust. Everybody to contribute to the ideas around how to spend the money wisely, where to go hunt for other money. And lastly, um, to think about the trade-offs on how, you know, how we're going to pay for it. So Bernata, what are your, what are your thoughts there on how we get, start to approach implementation of a big policy goal like this?
Um, thank you, trustee Pimentel. Um, it's a, it's a, it's really a difficult position to be at the end to tell everyone that uh we have limited amount of resources after the conversation was already set up that to do all the great things. And I greatly support all those wonderful things. We're all here for students and to ensure that we have adequate resources that are for those students. And then they are also that they are spent it uh with the letter of the law that we're not, we're in compliance. Um, so uh currently, we're very fortunate to get support for our Promise Program for from the uh California Promise Funding. Uh, we get about four hundred thousand from auxiliary operations from SMAC and we get uh some dollars from our housing. Um, and uh, so there are some various funding sources that are definitely helping us out with uh funding Promise uh uh Scholars Program. And so we're extremely fortunate with this. And of course, we have foundation uh contributing about three hundred thousand dollars. So uh, those are great efforts. Um, and uh we've been having uh tremendous uh amount of uh conversations about how we can expand it and what funding we can make um available for the Promise Scholars. Um, as mi- as chancellor, uh, vice chancellor Bailey um noted, we, there is some efforts at the state level to make the uh fee waiver um eh go away uh so that we can eh eh expand it to the students and not charge the fees, which is uh eh a bit tricky right now because those funds um are um restricting the use of all the available funding that we have in our general fund. Um, so um so yes, uh, in a short way, eh you know, to round it up is we're very fortunate to fund, to have resources right now uh for our two thousand students. Uh, we've been struggling with uh uh COVID nineteen and availability of force of uh funding uh with the eh fallout that the COVID nineteen created for our auxiliary operations uh for um even for foundation that is doing well, but definitely uh, you know, we're we're watching carefully what uh support they can sup- provide for us in the out years. And uh, we'll definitely look forward to the board um helping us out with the community support as well as uh with the county to help expand with the this problem, uh, this program.
Uh, that will be another discussing. Yeah, thank you, Bernata. Uh, it will be another day that we have to put on the agenda, basically the to know what the parameters of the costs are and then look at all of our available resources that we have. And uh, it it's just another piece, but I I think that the purpose of today was to identify this as a critical need, something that we all buy in on. Hear from all of our uh, all of our uh administration here uh to give us the the uh the the support and the confidence that this is something that, uh, you know, we're all ready to work on. And we've identified our community partners that we need to move uh in the direction of as well. So uh, that that being the case, uh, maybe we can uh wrap this part up at this particular point and um and expect the administration to continue to move this forward. Bring back reports on our on our on our coming agendas and uh find out where we are with the county and our other educational partners uh so we can get ready to move this as quickly as possible. And I'm sure, Aaron, you will be on top of this. Um, so it doesn't, it's not going to fall between the cracks. You have a strong commitment from the board. And um, and we've reached out to other community leaders and so we're ready to move. Thank you, uh, John and uh Maurice for uh making your uh efforts um uh outside of our uh here and with the county and uh we we just need to keep moving this forward. Okay, oh, I'm looking at my agenda and um, my goodness, I I have about five, four minutes. We were talking about like that. We're we're going to go, we figured we'd be going over an an extra hour and I think we we really did a great job of of giving a a a lot of attention to all of the areas that we wanted to, starting out with five, making it six. And having some very stimulated and focused discussions on all of these items of concern. Again, these are six out of about twenty-three. And so um, we'll we'll move forward with these in the way that we've talked about and um, there's other things that we'll be doing as well. Uh, let's go around and make some closing comments. Uh, trustee Oliver.
Uh, I don't have a closing comment except that we did get an email that uh came from a member of the public who wanted to speak under public comment, but couldn't get their microphone, I guess, to work from Lucia Latch Lackmire. So just want to make sure we uh note that comment for for the record. I don't know if if others have seen it, but uh.
Where was this? I'm sorry, I don't know.
I I got an email uh around eleven forty-two AM. I think it went to other trustees from.
I didn't look at any emails today.
Yeah, uh, okay. So she did have a comment and wasn't able to get her um you know, Zoom thing to work.
Can you summarize it, Richard?
It is from a part-time faculty member at Skyline who, I'm just trying to read this quickly. Uh, I think addresses part-time compensation.
All right, so it's a comment basically on part-time compensation.
I believe that's.
To uh um point out uh the fact that this is an area of great concern. Uh, she's a faculty member, looks like at Skyline. So uh, we will note that 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 comment was uh passed along to us and have that in the record as well. Thank you, trustee Oliver. Um, trustee Jay, do you have anything you'd like to add at the end of this long day? What are your observations of all the things we talked about, if anything, that that you might want to share with us?
Um, thank you. Um, Mr. President, um, I just want to say I'm excited to see everything being put into motion after this retreat. And thank you for allowing me to be here for the retreat. Um, I do want to talk about an email that I got from one of the students in our Burmese community with everything going on in Myanmar. Um, I've been reaching out to our students and it's just to continue to show moral support for our Burmese community and just reminding them of all the personal counseling we have on all three campuses.
Oh, that's great. And I I I I've seen emails as well from the chancellor that the colleges are also reaching out. Uh, I believe uh to uh lend uh support in any kind of uh assistance they can uh to the students as well. So thank you for sharing that with us. And that is, that is something that we're aware of and will will keep uh in the forefront of our thoughts as well. Okay, this is our last time around on on the retreat. Uh, any comments? Trustee Petritis, you're first. This is because ladies are first.
Uh, take, no comment there. Okay, um, I was going to say something about the use of ladies, but I'm going to skip it because we only have two minutes. Um, I really, uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to just sort of pass and say that again, for to not be repeating ad nauseam everything that I have said already or that anybody else has said. I thank you all for a really good conversation this morning. I think, again, is my first retreat. It's unfortunate that it's here on Zoom uh and not together, but it was great just to have a little, eh, e- even though this is still a public forum, it was great just to have a little more relaxed conversation and to feel like we weren't rushed through issues with the pressure of voting. And I just really appreciate all the perspective that everybody has brought to this conversation. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. At two twenty-seven, trustee Pimentel.
Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Trustee Goodman.
Uh, just thank my uh, my trust, my board colleagues and uh my district teammates. Uh, this is a great start. Let's let's continue it on throughout the year.
Trustee Oliver. That's right, he.
Thank you all. Great meeting.
Okay, yeah, here's my mouse drop. Anyway, thanks, thank, thank you everyone very much. So we appreciate it and all the work that went into putting it together, the little pre-meetings. That's why I think this is one of the best retreats that I've been on, even though it was, it was by Zoom. It was really a good, solid, solid discussions and I I think we've charted out some good directions. Okay, it looks to me that we are going to uh go to a our a closed session and I think I have something I'm supposed to say here. One second, if you don't mind. Uh, I am supposed to say that um we are going into closed session and we'll recess there. The items that we'll be discussing are the printed agenda. We're going to hold a conference with legal counsel regarding two cases of anticipated litigation as listed on the printed agenda. We're also going to consider employee dismissal, dismissal, discipline and release. Uh, is there any public comment on the closed session item? Uh, vice chancellor Bailey, anyone?
I see no hands raised this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. So uh, there are none. So again, I thank everyone in the board. We'll recess to closed session and uh we'll reconvene in um five minutes. Thanks, everybody. Take care. Uh, we go to a different site. Is that what it is, Mike?
Yes, I'm hoping. I've been having some trouble with emails. So I hope, I hope you got my email. I keep trying to send the link to the top of your email stack. So let me know. If you still have the trouble finding it. Yeah.
Thank you. We'll see.
Thank you, Tom.